This is the evening session of the January 24th Board of Commissioners meeting. I want to welcome everybody, and I'd like Father Allen from the St. James Episcopal Church to please give our invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Please stand and let us pray. Almighty and most merciful God, from whom we receive all that we possess and to whom we must account for all powers and privileges, benefits and blessings. Bless our leaders, and especially our elected and appointed officials here present. Please give them wisdom, charity, justice, that they may faithfully serve and reach right decisions for the well-being of our society and of all people. Bless all people of this nation, this state, this county, and all our communities, that we may be a people at peace among ourselves and a blessing to those around us. Favor us, please, with honorable industry, sound learning and pure manners. Save us from violence, discord and confusion, from pride and from arrogance, from hatred and from division. In times of prosperity, fill our hearts with thankfulness, and in times of trouble, let not our trust in you fail. That we may live in justice and peace and serve you faithfully in this and every generation. May God, Father, Son and Holy Spirit bless, guide and direct this Board of Commissioners and its members this day and always. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. And could I have the Cub Scouts come up, please? And I have Cub Scout PAC 61 from Bethany United Methodist Church. They're going to lead us in the place of license. All right, who's in charge here? Okay, right here, guys. Right, right here, right here. Okay, you ready? Turn around. There you go. Okay, now.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to let everybody know that this afternoon, we managed to get through five tabs in four hours. Do the math. Collective groan. So, we're going, we did the first five tabs this afternoon in the book, and now we're going to start tab six. And tonight, I'd like to ask Commissioner Weatherford to start a ceremony that we're all pleased to be part of.
I would like to ask our retiring Police Chief Hauser to come forward, please. The other commissioners. Chief, we, the Board of Commissioners, want to honor you with a proclamation tonight and your 35 years of service to our county, to our country. And I would like to read that out now if I could. Whereas Cobb County Police Chief John Hauser has raised our various military installations throughout the world until, was raised on various military installations throughout the world, until his family moved to Marietta when he was a teenager. He graduated from Wheeler High School in, that long ago?
Yes.
In 1977, and then attended the University of Mississippi, graduating in 1981. Only four years, that's pretty good.
Very good.
Yeah. With a Bachelor of Arts in Law Enforcement during his time at Ole Miss, Chief Hauser interned with the Cobb County Police Department, and upon graduation was hired as a Cobb County Police Officer. And he's spent the last 35 years of his illustrious career rising through the ranks. He is well-known for being a consummate and true leader and being a vocal supporter of our police officers. Many officers have expressed the feeling that Chief Hauser always had their backs. And Chief Hauser graduated from the FBI National Academy in 2003 and earned his Masters of Public Administration in 2004, while also attending the Georgia Law Enforcement Command College. Throughout his decorated career, Hauser served in many roles in both uniform and detective bureaus, as well as working as commanding officer in the Internal Affairs and Special Operations Units. In March of 2008, he was appointed to the rank of Deputy Chief of Police over Uniform Bureau, and in August 2010, was appointed as Chief of Police. And as Chief Hauser is a graduate of both the Cobb County Excel Management Development Program and Leadership Cobb, he is also the founder and race director for the Cobb County 5K to Benefit Make-A-Wish Foundation in Georgia. This charity race, in its 17th year, has raised more than $500,000 to help grant the wishes of children with life-threatening illnesses in our community. Now, we, the Board of Commissioners, do hereby sincerely thank Chief John Hauser for his dedicated service to his fellow police officers in our community for the past 35 years. His knowledge, expertise and leadership have outmolded one of the best police departments in this nation, and we wish him the best in his retirement, this 24th day of January 2017. Thank you. More.
Sure. Very good. Yes, I want to tell you, it's an honor. I really appreciate the Board taking the time to do this. Yes, I have been putting this uniform on for 35 years. There's not been a day that's been a chore to come to work. It's been great to serve the citizens of this great county for three decades, but I want to tell you that, very appreciative of the support of both the community and the Board, particularly the last six years as Chief of Police, all the work that I've done, both with the county manager and the Board, to improve things in the police department. And I will tell you that in 2012, did submit a police improvement plan that we are either implementing or have implemented, a number of things that have been tremendous and that sets the stage for the success of public safety for many years to come. So, I want to thank this Board. I want to also thank Chairman Lee, Commissioner Gorm, for their support during those times. But I will tell you that I think I speak for every man and woman that puts this uniform on every day. You know, they put on body armor, they strap on a weapon and come to work every day. There's not a man or woman that has an issue with putting themselves in harm's way every day. They just want to know that they have the support of the community, and we know we have that. So, you, everybody in this room, everybody that's watching this, taking time to be involved in what this county government is doing every day is tremendous. I know that the support of the community will continue. It will continue with this Board and our new leadership from Chairman Boyce. I'm confident with that. But again, thank you so much for taking the time to do this. Thank you.
What I'd like to do, I know there's a lot here in support of Chief Hauser with everybody and the police department, public safety, oh, don't go anywhere. Come on up here, and let's get a picture with all of you that came here to support the chief today. Come on forward. Officer Ott. Come on. Keep on coming, let's go. I hear see some hose draggers up here. I'm sorry, I hope my house never burns. Come on in. Come on, come on. Thank you. Let's give Chief one more round of our appreciation, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Weatherford, I appreciate that. And as I learned a long time ago, unless the community feels safe, nothing else works. And Chief Hauser has made us know that everyone in his county feels safe because of what he and his mechanism team of police department and staff do for us. We cannot say thank you enough, but Godspeed and best wishes in the future, Chief. Commissioner Cupid, I believe you have a presentation to make?
Good evening. Tonight I have opportunity to recognize the significant effort in our community as it comes to mentoring. And with that, I'd like to invite up Ms. Mary Ellen Gomes with Cobb County Schools. Oh, please do. We'd love to have the mentors come up as well. Many of you may know that January is mentoring month, and I thought it would be fitting for us to have representation from a significant mentoring program within our community, which is the Cobb Mentoring Matters Program. We have significant opportunity in our county to reach the young people of this community on a weekly basis by volunteering through our Cobb Mentoring Matters Program. And I'm so glad that Mary Ellen Gomes can be with me today, so we can recognize her for her efforts in facilitating this program, and so that she and also some participant, mentors of the program can also speak about their experience. So with that, I'm going to read this letter of recognition, and then I'm going to be more than glad to send the mic down your way, so you guys can talk about this successful program here in Cobb. The Cobb County Board of Commissioners honors Cobb Mentoring Matters staff and volunteers for their tireless efforts to build a community where every youth experiences nurturing one-on-one relationships and support. January is National Mentoring Month, and we are proud of Cobb Mentoring Matters for helping empower our at-risk youth to make positive life choices and maximize their full potential. This, the 24th day of January 2017. We can just give them a round of applause for all their efforts. And with that, I'm going to let them share a little bit about their program.
Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you. This, this program is run through the Cobb County School District. As a social worker, running the program, it's been phenomenal. And I'm extremely excited that we're entering into year five. This is a school-based mentoring program where we have some phenomenal people in Cobb County that have stepped up and have decided to mentor a child for one hour a week, for one school year and beyond. And I brought a few of my stellar mentors. And the other thing I'm really excited about is we just entered a partnership with the Cobb County Police POW Program and the Chief. I just met him the other day. We have 14 officers that will be matched with 40 students. So, we are really excited to get that thing launched, but I want to introduce, I'll let them introduce themselves, and they can tell you what school that they're in and what this has been like for them.
All right, excuse me. My name is Bobby Banks. I'm with Riverside Intermediate School, and I have some wonderful guys. I'm retired military, so I like to group of guys to mentor. I don't believe in the one-on-one. I just like to do group.
I'm Bill Spell. I mentor a young man at East Cobb Middle School, and I'm involved in some other mentoring opportunities. I urge all of you, if you don't understand mentoring or would like to influence the lives of a young person in a way that will bring tremendous gratification to you, to get in touch with Mary Ellen or someone else and enjoy a wonderful opportunity.
Thank you. I'm Betty Ann Cook. I mentor a young lady at Mapleton Elementary School. Chattahoochee Tech is where I work, and Chattahoochee believes definitely in service to the community, and we believe if we start very early in life, we can keep kids out of the state pen, and we can work keeping them a playpen and to give life's champ, challenges and opportunities and experiences, and it's mutually beneficial. So, we say, come and join us. It's a wonderful event.
And I'm going to echo that charge, is that they're always in need of more mentors. Last time we had Ms. Gomes up here, we actually walked away with an additional mentor for the program, and I hope that we can do the same here tonight. And so, if any of you are interested, please, by all means, reach out to Ms. Gomes or one of the mentors who are here before you today. All right, with that, shall we take a picture? You're welcome. Thank you, and thank you for all you guys do.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you again. Thank you for, thank you, Betty Ann. Good to see you. Okay, tonight, speaking of empowering and reaching out to our youth, tonight I have the honor of recognizing another stellar feat or accomplishment in our community, and that is by recognizing Ms. Lyric Carter. If you and your mom and any other persons with you can come join us today. You're okay, Mom? You sure? All right. Ms. Carter, you could take center stage. I am so happy to see this young lady, because this is the third month we've been trying to recognize her in this forum, because I think it was, it was overdue for us to recognize her accomplishment. I'm going to read her certificate of recognition to let you know a little bit of what I've had opportunity to learn about Ms. Lyric Carter who's before us. Ms. Carter, the Cobb County Board of Commissioners congratulates you on being a first runner-up in the Boys and Girls of Metro Atlanta's Youth of the Year Program. This rigorous competition required months of preparation, including essay writing, public speaking and interview sessions. We thank you for being a bright young leader in our community and at Pebblebrook High School, where you serve as junior class senator. We wish you the very best in your future as you continue to pursue your dreams and inspire others. Thank you so much, this 24th day of January 2017. I'm going to let Ms. Carter speak a little bit about her experience, and if there's anything you want us to know about you and how we can support you, let us know as well. Yes, she's going to give us opportunity, excuse me, she's going to give us opportunity for you to hear the speech that she presented to actually achieve this accomplishment here tonight. That's wonderful. Go ahead.
Life is hard. Life is heavy, much like weight carried on your back, like one of those giant hiking backpacks, but the weight can vary depending on the amount of baggage you carry with you. The memories you keep, the people you meet and the experiences you have, all go into that heavy bag called life. And the more you grow and the older you become, the more weight your baggage adds or loses. In the words of Erykah Badu, "Bag lady, you gonna hurt your back dragging all them bags like that." I guess nobody ever told you, all you must hold on to is you, is you, is you. Hello, I'm Lyric Carter, and I'm 16-years-old, and I represent the Michael A. Grant Boys and Girls Club. And you may think I'm too young to hold any baggage, but I'm here to tell you otherwise. My baggage may be small, but it is something, and the Boys and Girls Club is a part of that. My Boys and Girls Club taught me to let go of all that excess baggage that was holding me down. I was shy, but I am shy no more. Well, maybe a little, but that's not the point I'm trying to make. My Boys and Girls Club allowed me to show talents I had yet to uncover. I'm the artist everyone goes to and the girl that can drive Mr. Dion insane. I am more. I often felt left behind when my peers went on Boys and Girls Club trips, because once again, I didn't speak up. I was actually missing out on networking events, showing closer, and going to events that could help me strive in the future. My Boys and Girls Club took me in directions I wouldn't have gone. I had the opportunity to dance on the Fox Seeder Stage for three years. I'm president of Keystone, and I was asked to provide artwork for KKCC. My favorite program at Boys and Girls Club is college bound. Now, I honestly didn't think I needed the class, because I thought somehow I'd get into UCLA and have big-city dreams. Ms. Keisha convinced me to go, and I had a reality check. College is expensive. It also means being by yourself. Now, my dreams were not crushed, but it was a reality check on how I need to speak up, be more independent and get my stuff together. That dead weight in my bag has been lifted, and I am ready to scream to the heavens and to you how great my Boys and Girls Club is. On this journey called life, there will be people all around you, but you cannot let them bring you down. Excessive weight can make you or break you, and there are things you must let go. But remember, whatever choice you make, you must make a better you, and all you must hold on to is you, is you, is you. Thank you.
Ms. Lyric Carter. Thank you so much for that moving speech. That was wonderful. You are a shining star in our community, and we look forward to you going and doing great things in your future. You're welcome. I just want to recognize your mom as you go sit down. She's also an employee of Cobb County in our water system, and want to thank you and thank your manager, Steve McCullers, for being here tonight and also supporting Lyric Carter.
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid. Okay, the next tab is we'll have Mr. Hankerson. He's here to be giving us an update on the SunTrust Park.
Thank you, Mr. Bo, Mr. Chairman and Board. I'm proud to be able to do that. Just looking at the slides, we're about 92.8% complete. Spent $455,784,93. That's a lot. They're still averaging 905 workers on the Braves site, 510 workers on the Ball's site during the weekends, 145 on Mix U site. At 92.8, 92.8% complete, the ongoing work is focused on finishing fixtures and equipment. Three areas of the ballpark have received temporary occupancy. Those areas are the Braves administrative offices, the Braves baseball and stadium offices, operation offices, and the concessionary administrative offices. Bi-weekly staff means a hell to ensure there are no impediments to achieve a final certificate of occupancy. That's the ultimate goal, is to get those occupancy. The task force that Commissioner Chairman Boyce put together, chaired by Commissioner Otte, got down on the ball on the task force, so is the Braves, and so is my team and my meeting. We know that's, that's the goal. This is an air view looking west from the east garage on that, taken January the 5th. This is a view looking in from the hotel and headquarters, Comcast headquarters, shown on the left field, have both topped out for construction. This is a view from the field. The seats are complete. The fields are now sown and ready to be soweded in March. A view from the field. Installation of LED lights are underway. The lights can be changed, can change colors for various occasions. Here, they are glowing green. I've seen a lot of compliments about those lights. I, I'm not out that time of night, but I happened to be out last week that time of night, and they were, they were not green. They were multicolored, so, so it's awesome. Scoreboards are ready for the first exhibition game. The hardscaping planning, a winding down. The last plaza pool was January the 25th. The pedestrian bridge assembly from 285 is being assembled over Circuit 75 as an extension of the bridge over 285. Perimeter sidewalks being installed around the entire site. This is a landscape monument garden and batter's eye on that project. They have wayfinding signs, and they're looking good. More wayfinding signs, ticket and clubhouse stove fronts are shown here. Large fans are being installed throughout the concourse to keep the fans cooled on hot summer nights, and on the right is the concourse lighting in the field. I heard Commissioner Ott says today, the stadium is at such a point, these photos does not do the stadium justice. You just got to see it. This is a night view of home plate looking from the Braves Preview Center. It windows into the Braves batting tunnel at the Delta Club. It says, concession fit outgoing and kitchen and concessions. Birds' eye view at home plate. Update photo was taken January the 5th. As you can see, the Bill of Joy sign there, which be first to perform at SunTrust Stadium on April the 28th. Traffic management plan. A plan was put together led by a police department and our DOT with many partners. There are copies on the back table, if you'd like to have a copy of those traffic management plans, and if you can have questions, I think there are contact numbers in the book. The traffic management plans provide for safe, efficient vehicle and pedestrian arrival and departure, will minimize traffic impacts in nearby neighborhood businesses and daily commutes. The traffic, traffic management plan also will show you the 14 points of entering to the ballpark. The traffic management will be located on-site and staffed by Cobb DOT and Cobb PD to make adjustments in real-time.
A few months ago, we told you about all the transportation improvements happening around SunTrust Park, from infrastructure investments, to more access and parking, to our new 7:30 game time. Well, we're back to give you some additional information about getting to and from SunTrust Park. Say you want to drive to the game. Well, your journey doesn't start in the car, it starts on your smartphone. You can buy tickets and parking on the new app for SunTrust Park and the Battery Atlanta, which will be built by Major League Baseball Advanced Media. Next, within the Braves app, you can access Waze, the world's largest community-based traffic and navigation app, and you've got a plan to get to the game. The Braves and Waze have a unique partnership, where they'll collaborate with Cobb County to route traffic using real-time adjustments to minimize congestion and get people directly to their parking space. There are 14 ways in and out of SunTrust Park. On top of that, Cobb County is managing more than 30 intersections that will help you arrive as quickly and as smoothly as possible, all while minimizing the impact on everyday traffic in the region. And there's good news when you arrive. The Braves will offer more than 10,000 parking spaces for fans coming to the ballpark, and we're still adding more every day. If you're an A-list member, you'll be able to buy a season parking permit and lock in your space. For everyone else, there'll be plenty of parking available on a single-game basis, distributed a short walk from the ballpark. But what if you don't want to drive? Well, our partner Uber provides the only way to get directly from your front door to the ballpark at an affordable price. Just open your Uber app, tap a button, and your reliable ride is on the way. At SunTrust Park, you'll find a designated Uber drop-off zone, which puts you steps from the entry gates. And after the last out, well, it couldn't be easier. Head back to the Uber pickup zone to meet your driver, and you're on the way home. In addition, the Braves will be offering shuttles to take fans from various locations throughout the area to the ballpark. And of course, there's public transportation, too. Cobb Link and the Cumberland Circulator will route you right to our new ballpark. So, no matter how you get here, we'll make sure it's fast and safe, and you're in your seat for the first pitch. Play ball.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Ott, and he's going to give an update on task force, and then I'll pick back up again.
Thank you, Mr. Hankerson. As we talked about at the work session earlier today, the chairman formed a task force, which I'm chairing. Basically, it has a bunch of different lanes or groups, and you can see them on the screen there, Transportation, Public Safety and the rest. Basically, what we've done is created a board that has all the milestones, those things that could impact opening day, and they're on a board. And Mr. Hankerson has staff meeting every two weeks, I'm part of that, and then he is part of the meeting that we just had one earlier this evening. And basically, it's allowing us to manage all those projects and issues that need to be done before opening day. And as the county manager mentioned, February 24th is when the certificate of occupancy needs to be done, so.
With that, that just shows you the first kickoff meeting of the task force in the board meeting room, and we had one that is board meeting room, and we had one this afternoon. Then, to complement what we're doing, I have with all county staff and some other partners, biweekly meetings with all of our staff from all levels throughout every department. For instance, in community development, we not only have the director, we have the construction manager, we have the building official. In public safety or fire department, we have the fire marshal. So we've got them all at different levels. We also extended invitation to JLL as in the meetings. We've also reached out to Santa Springs to make sure they know what's going on. So we've got other partners that we're inviting to the table in our surrounding neighbors as well. But that's good. That way, we can get an update. Commissioner Ott's invited to all of those as well, and we comparing data to make sure that everything is consistent. Wow, 80 days to opening. 80 days to first pitch on April the 14th, Mr. Chair and Board. But we think we on track, and everything is going well. There are no surprises as to the construction of the stadium. And so, everything will be ready on the parking plan and all of that, I mean, on transportation plan. As more parking come on, that's a moving document. It'll be adjusted, and be adjusted even during game day from next, from one game to the other. So, kind of interesting when you get in and look at all the exciting things that's happening with this transportation plan. It's not a static document. With that, Mr. Chair, that concludes my presentation. Does she have any questions or comments?
Very excited.
I just have one question. What can we do to help you?
Sir?
What can we do to help you, the board?
Just support what we're doing and everything, and you're doing it. As you get closer, I'm sure the pressure will turn up. We get a lot more questions. We've got to do, continue to do a good job of communication. I think your task force, it brought some other partners to the table to help get that message out. We trying to do some things there, so I think we on track. I think everything is going well.
I appreciate you working with me. I know I put a lot of pressure on the last three weeks, being a new guy on the block, trying to make certain things happen, but I appreciate your patience and understanding. You've been here 23 years. I've been here 23 days. But I think that what we've done, what you've accomplished is incredible. This is no small task, and I think it's important for everyone, both here tonight and out there on Channel 23, to remember that Mr. Hankerson also has a responsibility for overseeing the daily operations of a 5,000-member staff, and this is put on top of him. And, you know, this is a significant amount of extraordinary responsibility placed upon him, and plus dealing with a brand-new chairman, trying to get some, his arm around some loose ends. So, I want to thank you for working with me. I want to thank you for your understanding, your patience, and I know that you know you have the full support of the board behind you. I think we finally got some definitions, some issues you've been concerned about, and anything else we can do to bring more definition to that, Mr. Hankerson. You know, all you have to do is ask.
We know that, Mr. Chairman, and it's been a pleasure working with you those 22, 23 days, and the respect you've shown for the position and recognizing that I'm the county manager and run day-to-day, and you remind me when I want to forget it. But it's been a lot of fun. It's been a lot of fun and making some changes and knowing what your visions are, and trying to work with you to accomplish those visions as well as with other members of the board, because they've got visions as well, and how you're reaching out to accomplish that, and I want to thank you for that.
Certainly deserve. You've earned it, and thank you for all you're doing, and we got your back.
Thank you, sir.
Going on to Tab 8, Mr. Johnson, you have the floor. You have six minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Going to give a brief presentation on the February Code Amendments, and then request that you please open the first of two public hearings that'll occur with this. Getting into the codes being considered in this round of Code Amendments. The first one is in Section 2-171. This is in the Administration section under the ordinance. This deals with our economic development, job incentive rules and regulations, and extending this for an additional year to provide time for staff to revise the policies and regulations contained in our code in regard to economic development. Going into Section 6-1, the first two deal with alterations to our definitions in our alcoholic beverage ordinance. The first is to allow alcoholic beverages at senior centers for things like events for wine tastings and things of that nature that our seniors may enjoy. The second is to lower the minimum seating threshold for restaurants from 40 to 20, and that was really geared around trying to help our small businesses and entrepreneurs be successful here in Cobb County. Going into Section 6-236, we have a change to our language regarding patios as it relates to areas where alcoholic beverage is served. If this particular code change takes the requirements for barriers or wall and removes that, so it could function more like a downtown marriaguard that we see with restaurants and tables outside, where someone could drink beer or wine there.
So, for this, alcoholic beverages at senior centers for events like wine tasting, is there a provision for carding these members?
Those only occur at private functions, and I'm sure that the people would make sure that everyone is over the age of 21.
And will these buildings be built with EFA siding? You're moving on, is that what I'm hearing? Am I getting that look from you, Dana?
I don't give looks, sir. Section 134-36 and 134-37G, these are alterations to our language as it relates to the suspension and revocation of two types of land use permits, temporary and special land use permits. The reason why this is being brought forward is so that we can ensure that violations are relevant to the permit that's being issued. You don't want to take, say, a code enforcement violation that has nothing to do with the operation of that business and revoke their ability to operate through that. Therefore, if they were violating a state law or a local regulation that deals with the regulation of their business, that would be a rationale for then revoking of that particular permit type. Going into 134-37A, this is in the special land use permit section. This is adding three new categories of uses that would require a special land use permit. This is clubs in residential areas, fraternity or sorority houses, and cemeteries. So if the board approves this, all of those would need to go through the special land use permit process. Going into Section 134-68, this is a section of the code that deals with the powers of the Planning Commission, in particular around plaits. And we have two different board-approved processes that currently exist as it relates to plat approval. We have the development standards, and we have the code, and they are not in sync with one another. And what we are trying to do here is to have one common, one common set of rules of how plaits are processed, and have that aligned with the county protocols. So that's the purpose of this particular code change, sir. Getting into Section 134-95, this is clarifying some language as it relates to timeframes and processes for filing zoning appeals. As we took a look at this ordinance, we saw that if I were a property owner or a resident and I wanted to appeal administrative decision, it was a little confusing on how it would be done, how that would be done. We wanted to make sure the process was clear and concise, so that people knew the process to go through in order to have decisions questioned through the Board of Zoning Appeals. Getting into Section 134-126, this deals with site plan and stipulation language. Currently, the way it reads, it just says zoning decisions, but the Board of Commissioners considers a lot of different types of zoning decisions. They consider rezonings, land use permits, special land use permits. We wanted to make sure that it was all-inclusive, where any type of zoning decision the Board of Commissioners makes, the site plan and stipulation changes would be able to go through the process as defined in our code by the board. Getting into all of the different residential zoning categories, that's 134-194 sequentially all the way to 134-219, inclusive of 134-221, 221.1, and 221.2. All of these residential zoning categories have a change where we are removing the permitted uses that require a special or temporary land use. That is to make sure that we don't create confusion, because if you have something that's listed as a permitted use, and you have the same use listed as a special land use permit, you can create confusion with the public of what really is required as part of that. So in order to reduce that confusion, we're removing them from the permitted use section so that it can reside in the proper place under the special land use permits. Getting into our senior housing ordinances, this is Sections 134, 202.1, 203, 203.1, 203.2, and 203.3. And these particular recommendations, we are advising the removal of the Community Care Retirement Community Ordinance, and revising the Residential Senior Living Ordinance in order to incorporate those different criteria that would allow for a CCRC to be built within the RSL threshold. The benefit of this is that we have a single unified senior housing code that can help handle all of the different scenarios of how senior housing might be developed in our community. In addition to that, there are a couple of other changes that are highlighted in the code. One of them is the recommendation to not allow RSL non-supportive on collector roadways. I know we talked about that earlier today, and I'm sure some of the commissioners may, I want to discuss some of their opinions on that as well. Additionally, there was a study done by the Atlanta Regional Commission that provided some basic recommendations for us to consider with our senior housing code, and we made some of the ones that they've recommended that made sense for us here in Cobb County. Lastly, we have 134-287. This is our donation drop box registration code, and in this one, we are asking the board to allow us to charge a nominal registration fee that'll allow us to cover our costs in trying to implement this program. The board approved this code a year ago, a year for this coming February, and over the past year, we have been identifying all of the nation drop boxes across the entire county. We are ready to start with the implementation of the enforcement of this code, and are just wondering if the board would like us to recover our costs in the process of doing, of implementing of this particular ordinance. Today, I'd ask the chairman to please open the first of our two required public hearings. The second required public hearing will be on February 28th of this year. After the February 28th meeting, the board may consider any of these changes or revisions that is brought forward by staff or the board. The Planning Commission will have a public hearing on February 7th, where they will make recommendations on Section 134. And lastly, on February 14th, I will be here in front of you in order to deliver the recommendations from our Planning Commission. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I ask you to please open the first public hearing on the February Code Amendments.
Thank you, Dana. The first of two public hearings is now open. I'd just like to remind each speaker that they have three minutes to address the board. And please state your name and which district you live in.
Mr. Chairman, fellow county commissioners, my name is Frank Savini. And this evening, I'm here on behalf of the Cobb County Civic Coalition, of which I'm the newly-elected president. This past Saturday, we reviewed, as the CCC board, all the Code Amendments, and we found a few areas that we would like to change, and we have recommendations for those change. Section 134-36H, first of all, we delete opposing, we oppose deleting the word temporary. We also oppose changing Board of Commissioners to BOC. And the reason for that, and changing temporary land use permit to LUP, is that Chapter 134 definitions do not clarify the term BOC as being Board of Commissioners. We also recognize that LUP stands for Land Use Plan, and that creates confusion where you have Land Use Plan and here, Land Use Permit. The rest of that amendment, we are fine with. It's, Section 134-37G, we also oppose the alternative interpretation of SLUP. There is no, again, no definition for BOC and no definition for SLUP in the definitions in Chapter 134. And again, the rest of that amendment is okay. For Section 134-126, the CCCC recommends adding a requirement for public notification prior to consideration and approval by the Board of Commissioners. And finally, on Section 134-202.1 regarding RSL, the CCCC opposes the proposed rewrite of this RSL code, which allows developers, or would allow developers, to use RSL as a means of perpetuating high-density mixed use where applicable throughout the county. There is no longer any density cap, and the language is so unclear that it could allow almost anything. The proposed amendment should be pulled and completely rewritten, and that's our recommendation. Thank you so much for your time, and I'll have a copy of this for everyone.
Thank you, Mr. Savini.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Ron Siphon, District 2, and I just want to follow up on a couple of the things that Frank just discussed. On Section 134-36H, I just, we're not, CCCC is not concerned with the primary purpose of the amendments to make it clear what would qualify for revocation or suspension of a land use permit. Our concern is the change in the language, particularly LUP, because the primary definition that, the primary context that people use the term LUP applies to the Land Use Plan, and the Land Use Plan is relevant to everything in Section 134. You can't take this section and define LUP, or you can't take 134-36 and define LUP as Land Use Permit, and put that in Section 1, in Chapter 134, and say we're calling it Land Use Permit, because everywhere else in Section 1, in Chapter 134, LUP means Land Use Plan. So, there's really no benefit to the county to basically change the terminology to something more confusing, just keep the current terminology. Board of Commissioners is fine, and spelling out the words temporary land use plan is what, that's what we're talking about. Don't make it unclear. Keep the current clear wording. So that's what we're, that's what we're trying to say on that. And on the RSL, and the same applies to 134-37, there's just no reason for those parts of the changes. On the RSL, on 134-202.1, I understand you're trying to merge CCRC into RSL supportive, but that's really tricky. And in going through all of the language in the ordinance, we're concerned that in places, well, first of all, CCRC is really generally a considerably more intense type of development than just what is intended by RSL supportive. In trying to merge this, we feel like in some places, it's, it's enabling RSL supportive to become more intense.
Thank you, Mr. Siphon, your time.
Okay, so, we think that needs to be revised. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Jill. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you very much. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jill Flamm, and I am here presenting the East Cobb Civic Association's recommendation My name is Jill Flam, and I am here presenting the East Cobb Civic Association's recommendations on January code amendments. With regard to section 134-202.1, combining the CCRC into the RSL code, ECCA believes this is a definite improvement. We do have a recommendation that a definition is to be added to the code in light of our experience with the CCRC code and the former Isaacson Project. Even though that case was denied, we can learn from the issue that was raised in the case. There is no definition in the code of underground parking. This is especially important in a zoning category that is allowed in any future land use designation and can be adjacent to residential zoning. Is a parking level underground if it is visible to the public? If it is visible, shouldn't it be considered in the overall height of the building or considered a story? As a member of the 2013 committee that tried to rewrite the existing CCRC code and as co-case manager of the Isaacson Project, this is a problem that was identified by both of these groups, and it was never resolved. We feel that now would be a good time to resolve it. Two definitions were suggested by Community Development when the CCRC code was revisited in 2013, and in what the document that I sent to you, they were referred to as version one of 50/50 and a version two, which 25/75, which reflects the portion of the parking that was below grade and above grade. Either one of these would clear up any question as to whether parking under a building should be considered a story or not, especially in the RSL-supported or RSL urban rental units. We recommend a proactive stance be adopted addressing this matter in the code now rather than having to address it during a zoning case, or worse yet, a court case in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors. I want to address the CCRC and RSL ordinance. Really, to fully understand what's going on, you need to pull up the draft and the RSL ordinance 134-203. You need to pull up the RSL non-supportive residential units subsection. You need to pull up the RSL supportive subsection and the RSL non-supportive urban rental unit section to really get a sense of what's going on. Our understanding is that the CCRC code is going to be expunged. The first problem I see is that the code number for that was, the CCRC was 134-202.1. Well, that was the CCRC code. In the draft amendment version one, it's titled RSL Residential Senior Living District. Well, and it's got some additions that are accessory retail to be allowed in RSL and chiefly to combine supportive and non-supportive on the same site. Here's the question. Supposedly, this is going to create a lot of new protections in terms of not being allowed to, well, in all of the other ordinances, it references, it'll refer you to 134-203. Right here, it's just 134-202.1. Is the intention to roll this new section into the existing RSL ordinance? Is that what we're doing? And if so, is accessory retail now going to be allowed in RSL non-supportive detached? Is automatically RSL non-supportive residential now going to be on a case-by-case basis allowed to incorporate supportive facilities? We have a very sound ordinance in RSL non-supportive, and in some areas of the county, people will turn out to oppose that, even though it's a fairly benign, good ordinance. And now by introducing and by basically trying to merge CCRC, which has been problematic, as we all know, into what has been basically a successful ordinance, I think we're making, maybe we're moving a little too quickly. Maybe we need to stop and consider what we're doing. I think that even if you don't want to, even if you don't want to have the CCRC ordinance remain, maybe it could be referred to as multi-stage residential RSL.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, did you get all those questions from Ms. Brown? I thought they were good questions.
Now, close the first public hearing of, I'm sorry. Is there any more? Yeah, right. I'm sorry. Yes, Mr. Johnson, you're good. I just want to make sure.
Now close the first public hearing on the code amendments. I'm for my script, obviously, because, for my, all right. Having said that, Commissioner Rodd, I'll refer to Commissioner Cupid for her comments.
Thank you, Chairman. I provided comments earlier at today's work session, and just to briefly reiterate it, there's been some communication about how we can consider various intensity of senior housing without condensing it in one code so that it doesn't limit opportunity for us to consider it in different part of the counties. And I think it was well-stated by Ms. Carol Brown that there is some good within our current code, and we certainly are looking to make things more challenging. We're actually trying to address the various issues that we've heard with respect to our senior housing codes. I'm hopeful that we'll have some options to consider as we look at the flexibility within our senior housing code.
Thank you, Mr. Weatherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I too agree. I mean, I support the concept, but obviously, I'd like to take some of these other comments in consideration and maybe incorporate, come back with a slot revised. I think we do need to simplify it and maybe have one ordinance, but delineate this portion of that ordinance so it is completely separate. But other than that, I'm in agreement with everything there.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrow?
Well, first of all, I still think that CCRC should be separate from RSL supportive and non-supportive. I think it's more, it's a more intense dwelling unit and more so than just supportive RSL. And I think it needs to be separate for the density, the buffers, the parking, everything considered. And the only other code that I'm having trouble with is the, to me, there could be an issue with security and serving to minors on the outdoor patio if it's not enclosed and attached. And the definition of patio, usually at restaurants, if it's outdoor seating on a patio, it's maybe in the back or the side of the building. I think earlier today, reference was made to the square, the outdoor seating on the square, but it's pretty much on the sidewalks at the streets. It's not really a patio. But is that considered part of the definition of the patio with this? Just outdoor seating in front of a restaurant on a sidewalk area? Is that considered a patio?
The patio would be more of on private property.
Right. So I'm just have a little issue with the serving alcohol outside without it being enclosed and someone walking in off the street and not being of legal age to have access to it. So that's just me.
But gained to Commissioner Burrow's point, they still have to card them.
Yes.
So just want to make sure that provision hasn't gone away.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Burrow. Commissioner Rodd?
Yeah, we'll start with that one. First off, this, the other cities, Smyrna, Marietta, the other cities allow exactly what we're talking about here. The county is the only one that doesn't. The county is the only one that requires the enclosed area. And to the chairman's point, this does not change any of the requirements of an establishment to card or verify the age of the person. You know, just because you can access the table or the seat from the sidewalk or from outside, doesn't change how you get the alcohol. You still, you know, you're going to still have a server come out who still has to be 21, that still has to have a serving permit. All the rules still apply. Nothing changes. It just changes the access. And it also, we've had a lot of establishments come and say that, you know, it kind of hurts their business because, you know, they can go to Smyrna and you can do something, you can go to City Marietta or Acworth, and here in Cobb County, it's like you got to go into jail to get to have a, you know, a drink. And so it's just, we're the only ones that don't require it. So that, on that, on the RSL, I don't disagree with Commissioner Burrow's comments about what CCRC allows, but that's the problem. As residents of District 2 saw for three and a half years, as we dealt with a zoning, which was the first one under CCRC, the CCRC code, the way it is written, does not work. And twice, the committee that created it in the first place tried to come together and fix it, and it was both sides. It was the development side and the residential side. Both times, they reported back to the board, they were not able to fix it to anyone's satisfaction. So the reason for asking for that code to be, go away, is it doesn't work. And according to the people that helped the county write it, it's not fixable. So if it doesn't work and it's not fixable, it should be removed from the books so that we don't get into a situation like we had with the one zoning that came in. The adding it to the RSL, and I can understand Carol Brown's comments, and does it need to be tweaked? Maybe. The intent was to try to, as she mentioned, the RSL, which took many years to develop, we started with suburban condominiums, moved to RSL, added the non-supportive, and it's been an ongoing process in dealing with the seniors and dealing with the community and seeing what works, seeing what doesn't work. This was an attempt to, in essence, add a third category, which would allow those things that the seniors and the ARC and all those that had done the study said that seniors were looking for, that the current RSL, non-supportive and supportive, did not allow. Now, it was not the intent to all of a sudden say that the supportive and the non-supportive should allow those things, and maybe the wording needs to be changed. The intent was to provide, under the RSL umbrella, so it's one category for senior living, a category or a part of that code that would allow those kind of features that the CCRC was trying to allow. There's aging in place, folks want to, you know, start in a non-supportive, maybe move to a supportive, move on to a nursing home. There was not, there is not a way in the current code, absent the CCRC, to build that type of development. And there are ways to have supportive and non-supportive in a similar complex when you zone and you just have divisions and all that. So the attempt here is to simply add another component to RSL that adds to it those things that the seniors have said they're looking for, where CCRC could not do it. So, and then my final request, I've talked to some of you, and I'm going to let you explain it, Dana, but I'm going to ask Dana to bring forward at the next public hearing, so just so folks know, that would be the first reading of it, and you would all get a copy of it. It would have to be the mandatory, too. But Dana's advice right now, there may be, change the name, but bring forward an infill, code language for an infill development technical committee. In short, we're starting to have an issue in East Cobb and other parts of District 2 with tear down and rebuilds that, you know, I totally support a homeowner's right to develop their property, but you've heard me say before that zoning is, when the board considers zoning, that is considering you're exercising your individual property owner rights right up to where they start interfering with your neighbors. And in some of the older neighborhoods in District 2, we're starting to have an issue where the tear down rebuilds are starting to impact their neighbors. And currently, there is no mechanism short of Dana's staff reviewing every single set of site plans. And so this was Dana's suggestion, I want to talk a little bit more about.
I thought you did a fantastic job.
Okay, well, then we'll leave it at that. And so anyway, so I would like, Dana, for you to bring forward at the next public hearing some language on creating that. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Rodd. Thank you, Dana. And this, just remind everybody.
Excuse me, Chairman. I'm sorry. I just figured since I do see some District 4 residents here that I'd just bring attention to one of the code changes, which is to modify our SLUP application to also include consideration of cemeteries. We had a, some concerns expressed over an administrative process that allowed a cemetery to move into an area that was primarily residential off of a main artery because certain criteria was met. That process allowed that cemetery to move forward without that coming to the attention of the commissioners or without that being voted upon. And if the ordinance were to pass, as was presented by our community development director, any application for a new cemetery would have to, have to go through the special land use permit process and be considered. So I just wanted to let you know that we were listening in, and that is our response to changes so that there's opportunity for commissioner and public input. Thank you.
I just want to remind everybody that the next public hearing on these, on these code amendments will be on Tuesday, February 28th. Thank you, Dan. We're going to make a small change here, although it's kind of a big one. We're going to have all the speakers that have signed up, we're going to have all 12 of them speak now rather than do six and six. So if you just line up. I'm sorry.
Actually, if I might suggest that I call them forward.
Okay, that's fine. I was going to charge them, I was going to charge them.
Oh, okay.
You're running the show there, Deborah.
Okay, Addie Ball, please.
I'm told I'm to address Mr. Boyce, the chairman. First of all, thank you for allowing me to speak, and thank you for giving me this opportunity. I appreciate it. My name is Addie Ball, and I want to speak to you this evening in regards to issues that face some of the constituents in your district. First of all, I would like to address our disapproval of the road construction with which this office has approved in regards to the Brave Stadium and some of the other waterline changes. There are three massive road construction projects going on in Cobb County right now. Those three projects are the GDOT travel lanes, the GDOT corridor project, in addition to the waterline expansion for Onterel Mill, and I believe it's Franklin Road, in addition to the Brave Stadium traffic. I work next to the Brave Stadium. This has been a very difficult time for me to travel to and from my job. These projects have made for a miserable commute for myself as well as many others. The way the construction has been allowed to commence has also been of great detriment to your constituents. There's no reason that these projects should have all been greenlighted without their ability to work at off-peak traffic hours in addition to, in addition to not happening simultaneously, because all of these projects happening at the same time are crushing to 75 and to the area surrounding, immediately surrounding the Brave Stadium. The way the dump trucks are entering and leaving the highways is disruptive, and it's happening during peak traffic hours. There is no, this brings me to my next point. Whoever has designed the new roadway around the Brave Stadiums has clearly never visited the area during peak traffic. Rather than add additional lanes, which are needed to address the current traffic, they've added medians and lane reductions. These changes would be a poor idea just for current traffic conditions, much less the future conditions which will be faced by those employed near the stadium as well as those county and out-of-county visitors who will be attending games and concerts held at the stadium. Residents of Cobb County would like a thorough investigation and a study of how traffic can best be addressed by our county. You are in charge of appointing managers to these projects. You are in charge of appointing managers to these projects, and we expect our tax dollars to be spent wisely in a way that benefits all of us and not just a few people who will be making money at the stadium, who have, who have money involved and invested in it. We would also like those people who are appointed to man, management positions to be held accountable for the poor planning as well as the poor implementation of those plans. I would also like to discuss the SunTrust Stadium. I'm aware that many of the decisions made in regard to businesses which are locating to Cobb County. Having said that, it is distressing to me that this stadium, and I know it's sort of past the point of being able to talk about, but it's distressing that this stadium was approved in the first place with very little transparency or warning to the citizens of Cobb County. We had no say in whether we agreed to the giant impacts which the stadium has had and which will continue to have on us. Something of this magnitude should at least have some method of voter approval attached to it. Studies have not shown that large venue stadiums increase property values. They also have not shown that this level of investment will show a return to the taxpayers or the county. I acknowledge that a key architect of the stadium move, um, was not re-elected. I think it is important for each, for the commissioner or the chairman to understand that Cobb County city, citizens will be paying attention, and we will not tolerate decisions like this in the future without some sort of, of say from us, or at least some sort of study into how we, we would perceive this, how we would like for this to move forward. Finally, I would like to say that this has kind of been a contentious time in the country, and I would like, as a citizen, I want to express to you that you're in a posi, that you're in a position to affect all of the people who live in your county. It would be very comforting for all of us to feel that no matter what our race, our gender, our orientation, our economic status, that you will be representing every one of us, and that you're here to represent us and not just businesses, and not just whoever you may personally benefit from, from your campaigns or whatever, that you're here to represent us, the people, and that you make decisions and put people in place and approve budgets and ordinances that are positive for all citizens in your county. Thank you.
And, uh, thank you for your eloquent words.
Andrea Miller, please.
Today I'm here to talk about dog tethering. Many people in the, this crowd have dogs. For example, my aunt. My aunt calls her dogs her children. When you tether a dog, it feels like you're tethering a child. I live in Fulton County. The law there to tether your dog, you have to stay outside with it for one hour. Cobb County is a beautiful place and should have the best laws. I hope you enjoy my speech.
Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your time this evening. Cobb County current law actually allows tethering to a single point, unlike, my niece said, Fulton County and many surrounding counties do not. I live by a family with two tethered dogs. They are out there in all inclement weather, including extremely low and high temperatures, tornadoes, sleet, rain, et cetera. This is detrimental to the dog's health, of course, but also its psyche. Inhumane treatment calls have been made on this house since 2014, prior to my living there, and still, nothing has been done. It can make dogs aggressive and lead to what we saw last week in southwest Fulton County. I called 6:00 PM during our recent freeze weather on 1-6. It was 6:00 PM. I respected the emergency 911 line, and I called the animal control emergency line. No one showed from this call. I sat outside for two hours in that inclement weather by the fence near the dogs. I couldn't feel my fingers, I couldn't feel my toes, and I was shivering uncontrollably. I recorded this experience and went live on Facebook. I was verbally assaulted by the dog's owners. I called again, the same emergency number, around midnight. And when Smyrna police arrived, I was told that I was harassing my neighbors, although the entire video I posted was of no one but myself, and I referenced them on no occasion. The police told me that this was, and I quote, "not important enough for animal control to come out for." At that point, per the Weather Channel, it was 15 degrees outside, sleeting, and with wind chill, it was four degrees. This is unacceptable. I sat with the director at Cobb County Animal Control, Mr. Hammond, for two and a half hours, expressing concern and asking for help. Mr. Hammond guided me on what to do, so I did exactly as he told me to, and I'm here now. I've received, actually, excuse me, I started the Cobb County Animal Alliance to help fix this issue. I put a petition online, and I've received over 2,500 signatures in just seven days. For the anti-tethering petition, excuse me. I used door-to-door petitioning, social media, and of course, email. This is a major issue that needs to be addressed. Cobb is absolutely in the spotlight, of course, because of the stadium and many other reasons, and having laws like this makes us look archaic and inhumane. I urge you to please consider changing our anti-tethering laws. Thank you.
Roberta Cook, please.
Good evening, Chairman Boyce and Commissioners. My name is Roberta Cook. I live in Mabelton, Georgia. I brought a prop with me this evening. It's a beggars' cup. I'm active in a citizen group called the Cobb Parks Coalition. Our website is cobparkscoalition.org. We are citizens from every count, Cobb County district who have united to support the $40 million Cobb County park bond funding, a referendum to buy new parkland in Cobb County approved by the voters via the ballot box in November 2008. It has been nine years since we voted for that $40 million park bond, and we are still waiting for the money. This month, you approved partial funding of the bond at 24.7 million. Any feeling of appreciation was quickly overcome by outrage when I heard the chairman's legality excuse for the $15 million shortage. It was explained that the $15 million would require another referendum. In other words, the voters need to go back and vote again for our money. I can't think of a greater insult to the voters and taxpayers of this county, especially after this board didn't need any voter support to funnel hundreds of millions of dollars to a baseball stadium. In November 2008, Cobb County voters made a decision to spend $40 million to buy parkland. For nine years, this board has purposely undermined that decision in a variety of ways, through your actions and inaction. This board has the power to produce $40 million for parkland acquisition, but you choose not, not to, under the guise of a legal technicality. I'd like to remind you that we are the people, we are the taxpayers, and we are the voters. The voters hired you for this job, which makes you accountable to us, but you treat us like beggars. For over a year, you've heard countless people begging for this overdue $40 million bond. I urge you to allocate the full $40 million funding before this new stadium opens. I think we all want the opening day story to be about the stadium's success, and not about the taxpayers at the stadium gates with tin cups begging for our park bond money that was sacrificed to build it. Please tell the Cobb County voters today how you will secure the $40 million needed to execute the parkland acquisition program. In closing, I urge the Cobb County voters, all of you listening today, to stand up for your park bond vote in 2008. Join us in holding these elected representatives accountable for it. Learn more by visiting our website. It's cobparkscoalition.org, and raise your cups, and start rattling them for $15 million right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is David Birkenbaum.
Good evening, Chairman Boyce, happy that you're here. Commissioners, you probably remember me from two years ago. Uh, now I'm a COPD advocate. We're gonna change this medical burn ban law in Cobb County on however long it takes me. We're down to the chimneys, the fire pits, and all this stuff that they say are legal. And the fire, the fire chief, I'd like to pass this today, and the chairman gets those. If you look at your first brochure on the application for a medical burn ban, you'll see two. One of them was when I originally went in for mine, it didn't have anything on it, we discussed it. Chimneys, the fire pits and all this stuff was exempt, totally not in it. So our 1,000-foot burn radius is cut down to, if your neighbor next door all of a sudden builds a pit, then your neighbor gets his benefits, and then it turned into a civil rights or a, a constitutional right to burn with nobody that has a medical condition has a constitutional right to live. So all they got is a 1,000-foot. We're not griping about the fireplaces that go, we're not griping about the, the people that burn outside the 1,000-foot where the smoke hangs to the ground and it moves across the whole county and all this stuff. You can't even go to Mabelton Walk sometimes without the fog just, just being around. And these fires are allowed during the summertime when you have ozone supposedly by the health department saying it's unhealthy for you outside. Give us a break, give the medical people a break, give them a 1,000-foot. Tell the fire marshal, if you're in charge of him, I didn't vote for a fire marshal, I didn't vote for a fire chief, but I tell you what, I took a banging two years ago. And, you know, I'm not gonna rehash old things, but it was, it was awesome. And I think we need to look at this, this code, and the fire marshal, when I approached him with this two years ago, he said, "Go to the board, change it." He threw y'all under the bus, and then y'all threw me under the bus, because we didn't have a response. The chairman, that was before, the county manager, my commissioner, uh, Mr. Heaton, and Mr. Hosack, "Oh, we're gonna get together, we're gonna do something for you." You ain't gonna do nothing for me. You never did, you never will. I mean, I was up here pleading. Now I'm pleading for 35 other people in Cobb County that need this burn ban. Don't go changing it by your application when a medical person that is signed by a doctor that needs a medical burn ban, you put the stipulation on the, the, uh, application now, letting them know that these chimneys and all this stuff. If you can't burn in a burn barrel, why are you allowed to burn in a rock pit? Same thing. If you can't burn in a burn, you know, if you can't burn in a burn barrel, why do you have these little trays out here that you can stack wood in and burn? It's open burning. It is up to Cobb County. It's, it's, it's their deal where they said the chimneys, the fireplaces and all this stuff is legal, year-round, year-round. I'm not talking about barbecues. I'm not talking about what you're cooking out and, and having things to eat. I do that, that's fine. But I'm talking about people that's gonna go out and burn, they use these rock pits to burn their trash in. Well, call the fire department, call the fire department. Well, you get wore out after a while, and you start arguing with the firemen going out there, when it states that the fire marshal has the authority, even though you follow all the rules in the Cobb County ordinance on burning, you may have to put the fire out. No, no, you don't either. If you have a burn pit, if you have a fireplace, if you have a chimney, it doesn't make any difference. All these little instruments, you wanna call it, is emitting fumes into the air. Particulate pollution is actually what it is, and it stays right close to the ground. It doesn't have a chance to go up a chimney, it doesn't have a chance to dissipate. It stays right on the ground, and if you live 50 foot from them, it stays right on the ground. So thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Cynthia Patterson. Cynthia Patterson.
My name is Cynthia Patterson, and I live in District Two. Thank you for unanimously approving the supplemental bond resolution to, to fund $24.7 million to purchase green space and parks for Cobb County. We look forward to funding the additional $15.3 million to fulfill the mandate of 67% of Cobb voters who approved Park Bond 2008. Our neighbors in Johns Creek are fast-tracking purchasing green space, and we can do the same. In July 2016, the Johns Creek City Council approved a $40 million bond referendum for park improvements and to acquire green space, as reported in the Atlanta Journal-Constitution. 66% of citizen voters approved the Johns Creek Parks Bond referendum in November 2016, roughly the same percentage that approved Cobb's Park Bond 2008. Six months later, in mid-January 2017, the city council adopted a resolution to implement administrative tasks to issue the bond, only six months after the referendum was first proposed in July. Construction could start this year, with all Johns Creek projects completed within five years. Compare Johns Creek's rapid commitment to purchasing green space and developing parks with Cobb's glacially slow progress. More than eight years after voters approved Park Bond 2008, 2/3 of the bond was issued. Not one acre of land has been purchased for Cobb Parks in over eight years. Meanwhile, prime properties were developed, flattened, and paved over. Cobb can make the same commitment as Johns Creek to protect green space, which benefits citizens of all ages and incomes. Green space makes Cobb County a desirable place to live. Home values increase, and businesses located where the quality of life is good. Thank you.
Norm Fag.
My name is Norm Fag, and I live in District Three, and I'm My name is Norm Fag, and I live in District Three, and I'm speaking about the Parks Bond. First of all, I want to thank the Board for issuing the partial bond of $25 million or so. And at the same time, express disappointment that it's not the full $40 million. The promise was made eight years ago for $40 million in a referendum of 67% of the voters of Cobb County approved this referendum. Does the Board have an obligation to comply with the referendum, to honor the referendum? Well, the Supreme Court of the State of Georgia, in the case of Dickey at Al versus Story at Al in 1992, ruled that the Floyd County Commission was not allowed to use money collected under terms of a referendum for purposes not specified by that referendum. In other words, the court considered referenda to be obligations which must be honored. Nevertheless, for eight years, this Board did very little, in fact, nothing. By contrast, the Board showed great enthusiasm for investing in SunTrust Park, and displayed enormous creativity in discovering ways to skirt the legal obstacles to funding it. Many believe that the high-handed manner in which the Braves deal was rammed through, sweeping aside strong public opposition, is the primary reason why then-Chairman Tim Lee was defeated in a landslide by current Chairman Mike Boyce. Indeed, Chairman Boyce's campaign frequently questioned why a $40 million investment in parks required a referendum, but a $400 million expenditure for the Braves project apparently did not. There are legal technicalities, obviously, why the original resolution could not be fully funded in its original form, but we are not satisfied. We are grateful for the $25 million, but we fully expect the other $15 million to be provided as required by the terms of the referendum. Many see this as a question of honor and of good responsive governance. An obligation was incurred by Cobb County government, which it is fully capable of keeping. Partial compliance with the mandate of 2008 is just that, partial. And I would encourage people who are interested in this topic to visit www.cobbparkscoalition.org for more information on this topic, and I thank you for your time.
Mary Kirkendall. Mary Kirkendall.
Good to see someone here that speaks and smiles and is aware and paying attention, it looks like. Hey, it's really hard to have a half an hour worth of notes and have to cram them into five minutes, and I probably will only get about a minute's worth in coherently. But I'm here about the tethering. But I'll get to that. The Braves stadium has certainly thrown Cobb County's priorities all out of whack. There seem to be little focus in the needs of the citizens or the community anymore, or the parks, or the environment, or our quality of life. It's just build, 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 greenlighting every darn development that comes to before you guys, and you're creating an obscene number of high-density projects and apartments without any vision, plan, or thought of the lasting and detrimental effects this unplanned boom will have on Vinings neighborhoods and the surrounding communities. But while all this focuses on the building out Vinings, our animals are continuing to be tortured, just like Andrea spoke about. We came to the last Chairman and you guys a month ago, and we have sent emails, and we've had a little bit of response. Thank you, Lisa Cupid, because you seem to be paying attention to this. We need compassion from you guys, we need to hear. This should have been something fast-tracked, and it should have been read tonight. All it takes to rewrite an ordinance is pull up Douglas County, Athens-Clark County, or Gwinnett County, look at their two paragraphs of tethering ordinances, and cross out the primary and secondary enclosure that is Cobb's loophole that's allowing dogs to be tethered 24 hours a day, and just cross that out and put in the new writing language. It takes five minutes. You guys act like it takes, you've got to sit back for four months and contemplate it. This is an emergency. These animals were outside during this freezing weather, tied to a damn fence, excuse my language, can I say that? During the sleet and the freezing temperatures, and Animal Control says these dogs are fine. They're not. So we expect some movement on this, and I just spoke to Mr. Rutherford, and it looks like it's going to be another month, and it's just going to be dragged out. And I'm afraid that some of the problem, and the root of the problem really, is the animal control itself. I'm not understanding why there's an advisory board at Animal Control that is compiled of Humane Society members and veterinarian members, and they are the ones that should understand all the ordinances. And the Veterinary Association and Humane Society, as well as CDC and the Department of Agriculture have all came out strongly against tethering of animals. So I'm not understanding why they are working in the animal control department. So we need an investigation to what's holding this back. I feel like some of it is because the advisory board is because it's people that the Commissioners have nominated and appointed, that they were only going to kind of do what you guys want. And I think many of our departments are underfunded and understaffed, and by trying to rock the boat and change things and asking for change, you guys are going to be put on the spot because is Cobb broke, or is Cobb just priorities are just messed up? But anyway, so I'm not saying anything that I wrote down, but I do want to, everybody knows that tethering is inhumane, so why aren't we getting a quicker response to this? And we do expect to have no unsupervised tethering, absolutely no unsupervised tethering. If Gwinnett can do it, Douglas can do it, Athens-Clark, I believe Bibb County, there's other cities, and then there's some whole states have even enacted these laws. Why can't Cobb County do it? These are issues of quality of life for us, and we're falling behind, as you see with the parks. Our roads are a mess, just like the First Lady. You guys aren't addressing so many things that are important to the people that live here. And thank you Colonel Boyce, we hope to talk to you soon. Thanks.
Ben Williams, please. I'm sorry, Monica Delancey.
Good evening, my name is Monica Delancey, I live in Ostel, the Riverside area. First, I would like to just make an announcement that on February 16th, at Pepperbrook High School, which is located at 991 Old Alabama Road in Mableton, Georgia, we'll be hosting a SLOSS Town Hall meeting. It will begin at 6:00 PM, and it will be in the Earl Reeves Theater, and that's on February 16th. Now, I'm not going to belabor any point in particular, I'm here to tell you some things you may already know, and to inform you of some things you may not. Recently, in the Maryland Daily Journal, it was reported that Riverside Intermediate School, that is located in Mableton, Georgia, and the attended zone includes all of Ostel's zip code 30168, and parts of Mableton 30126, is on the state of Georgia chronically failing list. That is based on the College and Career Risk Performance Index. This indicator is given from the Georgia Department of Education as a failing school. The score that Riverside Intermediate received on a scale of 100 was a 59. The Maryland Daily Journal reported in three articles in the past two weeks, each of the stories referenced that poverty was the main challenge that contributed to the failing score for Riverside Intermediate School. Additional data shows that Riverside has a 95% free and reduced lunch rate. But from research and groundwork that I do in the community, there are even more challenges. My assessment reveals that renters outnumber homeowners in the Riverside Attended Zone. There are 15 apartment and mobile home communities that are in the Attended Zone. And when you widen that Attended Zone for Pepperbrook High School, which is the feeder high school for the Riverside area, there are 23 apartment mobile communities in the Attended Zone. Now, this assessment that I'm giving is also contributes to the ever-being of transit community. Every two to three years, there's a cycle of families moving in and out. Now, some of the contributions to the reason that families move in and out is because they may outgrow the apartments, also job changes, meaning they have to move closer to the jobs. But the biggest indicator is that they're moving out because of not being able to keep up with the $600 to $800 monthly rent rate while raising a family on non-livable wages. The residents who rent the apartments pay the rent, and there is no sliding scale based on income. Majority of the families who rent the apartments do not receive government assistance for rent because the waiting list for Section 8 vouchers is three to four years long, that is if you're even able to get on the list. So if a family income is less than $2,000 a month for a family of three who rents an apartment for $600 to $800 a month, there is no room in the budget for emergencies, gas for extra trips to schools, supplies for school projects, enrichment opportunities. Now, what we have now are families who are trying to stabilize their homes at the same time trying to navigate the educational systems. You have families from 15 apartment mobile communities, also five designated subdivisions, going to the same school, which is Riverside, and it shows that 95% of the 1,270 students that attend the school come from homes that qualify for free and reduced lunch. That means we have over 600 families trying to stabilize their homes in the Riverside Attended Zone. A student cannot begin to appreciate the opportunities a school provides with these challenges. This is Riverside today, but it can be another community tomorrow due to the lack of affordable housing. My urgent request to you is that as we look at revitalizing communities, communities are families, working parents, growing children, and adults aging with dignity need our support. Let's re-energize our families. We must give them opportunity to continue to reside in the community and to be able to afford to reside in the community. Now, we do understand that developers are not in the business to build housing and charge street rent, but we can ask investors to invest in apartment units, to offer services within apartment complexes, and to partner with schools. I ask for you to make an urgent request to the federal government to release more funds for housing vouchers. If we as a county can get behind a team of individuals who may not personally we work with, live with, or know, clearly we can get behind our community of residents whom we do. Our youth are counting on us.
Thank you, Ms. Delancey.
I want what every person of progress wants for their community, jobs, opportunities, good education for our children, quality recreation, clean streets, no crime, and elected leaders who truly know us, respect us, and represent our best interests. Thank you.
Ben Williams. Ben Williams. Next speaker is Robert Korn.
I'm president of the Cobb County Chapter of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, and I live in Mableton, which is in District Four. I had planned to come to tonight's meeting, wanted to see the new Board in action, this is my first commission meeting, to welcome the new Chairman in his role, and to also extend my best regards to the Commissioners who are continuing to serve with him. Funny thing happened on the way to the theater tonight. There was an unusual amount of calls from friends of mine, and asking me if I was aware of a new financial situation that is confronting the Boards, the Board resulting from an assertion by members of the Atlanta Braves, that there is a due bill of some $14 million. And of course, I had not read the paper, and I did not know. But it provided for me a flashback. When we formed Citizens for Government Transparency, only to be ridiculed and accused of being against a new team coming to town, rather than, our real purpose was to bring to the Board's attention some fault lines in their stewardship of public money. Many of us felt as though we were trying to act as canaries in the mine, but we were ignored, and of course, a number of us, as a result of our continuing crying out, died. The new confusion regarding the unclear obligation of additional monies have awakened or resurrected some of us, including myself. Ira, I thought that perhaps during today's work session, the confusion would be cleared up, but I understand that that may not have been the case. I'm encouraged by Brother Hankerson's or Mr. Hankerson's comments, that he will do due diligence to really drill down in it, and he conveyed some sense of optimism that perhaps the problem could be solved. And I'm hopeful that that is the case, that in the mysterious end basket that perhaps maybe none of you knew about, the $14 million can be reconciled without imposing an additional burden on those of us who were here. We brought forth a number of things to the attention of our Commissioners. Most of those things, as I said, dismissed, laughed at, and ridiculed. I would hope that we have settled, Commissioners, the whole issue of raising chickens in the yard, but it appears as though the chickens have come home to roost, and perhaps we may have to be dealing with chickens again. So my hope is that we are not confronted with additional monies in order to plow into bringing the Braves to Cobb. I want to be there on opening day, and as a matter of fact, you see that I'm dressed in Atlanta Braves colors, I have my hat, so I'm looking forward to that. But please, let's resolve that question, and I appreciate, Mr. Chairman, your transparency of bringing it forth, letting us know, and we want to stand at the ready as a proper resolution to that is arrived at. Thank you so much for your attention. Thank you so much for your attention.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Chairman, first of all, I didn't call you, Mr. Chairman. I'm here tonight to talk about body cameras for Cobb County Police. First of all, my background, I've been in Cobb County for 41 years as of tomorrow, I think. I made this home after stint in the military, enjoyed it, lived in the 4th District, South Cobb, all that time. Probably a year and two months ago, I think, there was a constituents and our police were maybe at a chafing point, lots of concerns, commiserations that were going on. First of all, I want to get some accolades here. I know that a lot of the commissioners have spent a lot of time, evenings, working on bridging the gap programs. A lot of our precinct commanders have been involved with that. That, I think, has really made a significant impact. The next stage, I think, that we need to concentrate on is these body cameras. I understand that we have gotten all the body cameras funded, all of the electronic equipment, the servers are now in place. What is missing, as I understand it now, is maintenance support personnel to take care of that, and I urge you to consider that as a priority. Let me tell you why that's important to us. Last year, we had one of our highest mitigation losses in the public safety area. It was $1.7 million. I think it was about $1 million higher than the year before. Not much compared to when you look at other local governments. Some local governments have had lawsuits that have hit $30 to $40 million. We can't afford that, and body cameras, I think, are going to mitigate that. Now, one of the other things, I spent a lot of time, I went through the Citizens Academy, the Public Safety Citizens Academy, and in that, well, first of all, I want to get some accolades there, the officers there, the fire department, everybody there, there was no question it was off limits in there. One of the things I did was I, when I was in the, at the police academy, I asked the question over and over of what do you need, and also on the body cameras. I wanted to find out from the officers' views how important those cameras were. Interesting, the motorcycle officers, I think we have 11 of those in the county, they were the first that brought those body cameras in. They said they wouldn't do without them. It's just part of life now, how important it is to them. But I've heard the same from every officer there, whether they have the cameras or not. So I want to urge you in doing that, the thing I would say is that the body cameras really are financially a good investment. It's going to mitigate our risk in this. The truth is in those cameras when we have them out there. In addition to that, mitigation of time, what I heard from the officers who were using those cameras was that it makes my job easier now. Now there's no question as to what I've done or didn't do, or what I did right or what I didn't do right. It's on those cameras. It also will free up resource, and lots of times, officers are going to spend time in court or time doing paperwork when we need them out there in the field. So again, I think this is just a great investment for us, and I want to urge you to look at that last piece of funding that we need for that operational maintenance support and the personnel there. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies, gentlemen. My name is Gary Pelfrey. I've lived in the county for over 30 years. I thought I was going to be talking about the changes to the Cobb Code, but I realized I didn't know enough about it to do that. The subject I want to talk about, anyway, is transparency. Transparency is a word that we had some trouble getting through your predecessor. He finally learned how to use the word a great deal, but I don't think he ever really understood it. I thought that I would start off with an example of what I consider to be very good transparency, and I'll ask you to show that. I carry no brief, one way or the other, about the park folks, but what I did see two days ago in the newspaper was this letter to the editor from the chairman, which seemed to me to do a very good job of explaining the issue of the 40 million dollar bond and the legal details. As a lawyer, I can tell you, there are legal details that are there that you're not going to do anything about. So I thought you did a good job of explaining it, and I thought that was a very good example of transparency with which to try to make the point I would like to make tonight. So I may be saying that the park folks who presented tonight didn't read your letter, which may be a commentary about the Marietta Daily Journal, which we could all do something about, maybe, but I won't go there. I'm here to talk about the meeting this afternoon principally and a good bit of tonight. The Cobb County Code is the constitution of this county, this group. Everything that you folks do and everything that we folks ask for has got to be governed in some fashion by this thing, and I am astonished at my inability, in my 80 years and three college degrees, to not understand what is going on about it. If I may, may I move this? Your presenter this afternoon and earlier tonight, who dealt with the code issues, has a 6.2-minute video available. When I inquired about how do I deal with these 14,000 words presented as changes that were going to have something, again, a phrase that might need some definition, public hearing about, what do I do with these 14,000 words and understand them and what caused them and whether or not they are something I should support or not? Well, my commissioners, Mr. Ott, was very helpful and referred me to various things, including this 6.2-minute video. Now, the video had some of the things which you saw earlier tonight, but here is one example. The very first screen on there was extend the economic, existing economic, and you can read it as well as I can. I still don't know what it means, but what I think it means is that we did something last year that we didn't get completed, and so we want to change the effective date from 2017 in March to 2018. It took an awful lot of words to do that, and we still have never really asked the question, what is it doing in the code anyway? So that's where I start worrying about transparency. I think we could do this much, much better. The next item on the list, and I'm really not going to go through the whole list, this is the last. These are the next three items on the list. Allow wine tasting at senior centers. I agree with the chairman, there's some issue there. If I may take 30 seconds, I will tell you that I shop in Kroger's on Wednesday because it's Senior Day. I went there one night without my driver's license and bought a case of beer, and it turned out when I asked the cashier for the senior discount, they could give it to me, but they wouldn't sell me the beer because I couldn't prove that I was over 21. But that's another matter. I don't think you can legislate that. That's a true story. Thank you, thank you, sir. If I were trying to, if I were trying to demonstrate flexibility and transparency and utility and something that would support a true public hearing, I would have taken this thing about the wine tasting at the senior centers and the minimum seating of restaurants for small businesses, and I would have put up the old code and I would have put up the new code, and have looked at it and said, well, what does that mean? And sure enough, if you look, what it really means, I'm sorry, I put the wrong one up there.
Mr. Pelfrey, your time, including the extra 30 seconds, has expired.
And if I may put this one last up as I take this down, that's the greatest example of lack of transparency I have ever heard of. I have no idea what that means. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I take a five-minute break before we get into the rest part of the evening. And we're back, we're back in session here, and we're going to go to tab 10. So I understand we have some items on the consent agenda that some of the commissioners would like to pull from the consent and discuss after we do the consent agenda. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, I'd like to pull item 18, page 131, for brief discussion after. 18.
131.
Page 131, yes.
I'm looking, I'm looking. I see page 74.
We're going to pull item number 18 on page 131 off the consent agenda and then address the rest of them. And so, that's the only one that I know of. Okay, so I'd like to have Mr. Colors? I'm just going to wait to see, I just want to make sure everybody's here from the consent agenda before we start voting on it. We have Mr. Wilgus, you're here, okay? And, come on, I just want to make sure that all the departments are here in case there's any questions. Okay, we're all here. So do I hear a motion to, do I hear a motion to accept all the items on the consent agenda, save number 18 on page 131? I just said it.
And authorize the chairman to execute.
I move to approve the following agendas on the consent agenda as revised and authorize execution of necessary documents by the appropriate county personnel.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the motion? Okay, and then for those who are at home watching at home, the consent agenda will be scrolled on the screen after tonight's meeting. All right, now let's go to number 18 on page 131. Is there a way that the people in the audience at home can see what we're talking about? Do we have that, do we have that spreadsheet? Okay, that's the item, and then we have an item on that. Is it on the front?
It's page 133, right there.
Yes, yes, sir, we do have it on the screen.
If we could put that up so the audience could see what we're talking about, and Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After some discussions going through this reserve list to fund some of the things out of the reserves that we had in the FYI budget, I would discuss with Human Resources item number 22, which is a workforce satisfaction study. This money, the $52,000, is to administer that, and my understanding is that there's no intention of doing that one anytime in the near future, so I'd like to recommend that item 22 be merged into item 14, which is vehicle replacements, and hopefully that extra $52,000 will get us a couple more cars, and that's my only suggestion.
So we have a second, and we have, now we have discussion, okay? So Commissioner Cupid.
Well, we had our session the first week in January. There was discussion about the satisfaction survey, I believe, and following discussion where we provided that this would be completed, and I'm very curious to know what has happened between then and now for this to be, I just want to finish, please, for us to make this change. Then, number two, I'm very curious to know, again, echoing the comments that I had at our agenda session on Monday, just how we are making decisions about money that becomes free without transparent discussion and contemplation by all members of this board. This is completely new to me and not in the direction that I thought we were going in, and I would like some clarification as to what's going on.
First question I have is Tony Hagler here. Tony, could you address the issue that Commissioner Cupid had brought up about, are we or are we not doing the satisfaction survey?
Sir, the satisfaction survey was put on hold until after the class and pay would be accomplished, and so we are awaiting implementation of that and then take the board's further direction on whether to do the study for the employee satisfaction.
Chairman, if I may respond to that. The items on this list don't have a date of implementation next to it to say that it has to be completed over the next month, two, or three, and if I'm not mistaken, some of these items may not be executed until the next budget season starts. So if that is our approach to that item, to what other item are we taking such a similar approach to?
Are we executing this obligation during this fiscal year, or we're going to carry it forward, is it possible we can carry it forward to next year?
That item would cover a three-year term for the satisfaction survey. It was to administer that over a three-year period. As to when it would occur, this year would be awaiting direction from the board or from the compensation committee that was to be reinstated to give direction or advisement when to do that survey.
Okay, so it was, it was, in fact, tied to some process?
Yes.
Including the pay and compensation, the compensation study committee?
It was a recommendation from the committee and with the board to hold off until we implemented the class and pay study to move forward with the satisfaction.
And Chairman, with us starting that committee soon, I would say, why not at least provide that committee discretion to consider this item before we limit their ability to be able to move forward on something that they had originally made a decision on and that employees have been waiting to participate in?
Okay. Commissioner Weatherford?
Yes. My understanding is the satisfaction study has been developed by the Archer Group, and that is ready to go on the shelf. This money is to administer that by the Archer Group, and that I, for one, don't have the confidence to have them administer that. So I have a problem with giving them funds to do something additional when I don't feel they've done what they should have done on the pay and class study. So if you want to keep this money in reserve and not dedicate it solely to the Archer Group, then I don't have a problem with it, but my understanding is that we're not going forward the implementation for quite some time, so I felt like it would be better to have a couple extra cars than have it sitting on the shelf until we found somebody else that could administer that.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Sure, absolutely.
It was my understanding, that was a decision to be made by the compensation committee as to when this would come forward, and that was some of the direction I understood, and that was going to be part of the reconstitution of that committee.
So would you like to modify your motion?
Mr. Bowman.
If we specifically address certain companies, does money have to be allocated to that company, or can we just say for implementation of? We could amend it to say the implementation of the satisfaction study, sir. It doesn't have to pertain directly to Archer.
My concern, more than anything, was the fact that who was going to do it as opposed to the $52,000.
Yes, sir, you could, we could amend that. You could, we could amend that.
So I hear a motion modify. Okay? You have a second?
Second is okay because my, I share the same concerns that Commissioner Weatherford does. My, my objection was to the Archer Group doing the survey.
Okay, so what I hear is we're going to just modify that line to maintain the, the survey, but it'll be, it'll not be connected to any specific company right now. And will that meet your, your issues? Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, that does. I just... I have some concerns about this communication that we're having. Because if there's an issue with how we've obligated funds contractually and we're saying that we're not moving forward with that, then in this type of form, then that's a bigger issue that impacts other items beyond this and could even become a legal matter if we've executed a contract and we're saying it has not been fulfilled, then I just think we just need to exercise caution in how we communicate.
But this is not an executed contract?
I do not believe so.
For this, for this line item?
No, sir.
Okay. Now, that's her concern. And, but it also goes to the point of, the real issue he was, that I've heard from two board members, and perhaps a third one here shortly, is that they did not want a specific company to do the survey. They want to leave that in the hands of the, of the compensation committee to address.
Tony, speak to that.
Okay.
Commissioner, we, we do have a contract with Archer to do, to develop the study and to administer it for a three-year period.
But we have a contract, but we haven't obligated that part of the contract yet.
No, sir, we have not.
So that provides a provision to go back and renegotiate the contract or execute some other provision of it?
I, I would have to defer to legal on what we can do with the terms of the contract.
We have that option? And Ms. Dance?
I have not seen the contract in some time, so I would need to review the contract.
Commissioner Burrow?
I was going to ask that, but also, I'm sorry. Also, the $52,680 is for the sole purpose of administering the contract.
The satisfaction survey? Yes, ma'am.
I mean, the survey. So whether we pull that or not and use someone else to administer it, how do we know that's going to be $52,680? And legally now, we don't know if we can use another company or if we're obligated to honor our contract with Archer.
If, if I might comment?
So what if we just take that out and leave it in reserves, and then when the time comes, we'll know what amount we need to...
That would be more appropriate, I believe. I believe you should address the contract matter as a contract matter.
Right.
And separate it from this process. That would be my recommendation.
And if I could make a brief recommendation on this, I mean, we could remove the Archer line, and it doesn't dictate whether we use Archer or not. I mean, we, the purpose is for the satisfaction survey per this line. Whether the contract comes back and we can use somebody else or we have to use Archer, the monies would be available there for that intended use. So we could strike the Archer name and still leave the monies, and this would be in reserves anyway by bringing it forward into FY17 to be appropriated. So it doesn't have to say, it doesn't have to read Archer, and that would give legal the time to review the contract to determine whether we have to use Archer or we could use a different vendor.
Commissioner Otte?
Mr. Chairman, what I would suggest is that we do a clerk's note expressing Commissioner Weatherford's and my concerns about having Archer do the study due, due to our concerns about past performance on other issues. Leave it as listed. It gives legal a chance to look at the contract to see if we can come out of it. Like Bill said, you know, we can always, even if we put it in here with this line where it says Archer Group, the board can always come back and say, we're not going to do it with Archer, we're going to do it with somebody else. But I, I think I would like to see something in the minutes that at least two of the commissioners have an issue with it, moving forward with Archer. I mean, I think we should do the survey, and I also point out that this $52,000, this is one year. This is not the three years, right, Bill?
I, no, that is for the three years.
Okay, because we're moving money from '16 to '17, why would, you know, why are we moving all three years?
Basically, what we'd have to do again is move any remaining amounts similar to the one of the other ones.
So we can't leave anything in '16?
I'm sorry?
We can't leave anything in '16, that's why you're moving it.
We, to reserve it, we would continue to deplete that money as it was spent down.
Okay, so I, I just think that a clerk's note at least gets in there that there was some concern.
Okay, but we still have a motion, still have a motion that's, that's real, so we have to act on that. But Commissioner Cupid?
Let's look at the practical implication of leaving that note there. And I, well, let me just back up and say I support it, I support Commissioner Burrell's suggestion to just leave off the item as opposed to contemplate it here. I'm very concerned about us putting in text about being concerned about Archer's performance over $52,000 when we have a $13 million line item referring to the same organization. So you're saying you can't rely on the veracity of their work for $52,000, but you have a line item in here for $13 million that seems to qualify them to direct a significant amount of money that we're reserving for the county? And I just think if there's an issue with Archer, then that should be dealt with separately because if someone were to look at this from the outside looking in, it just doesn't make sense for us to be questioning an amount that's nominal for organization that has a significant amount of funds deployed.
So my question to the county manager is since this comes under your purview, what's your, what's your thoughts?
Well... I think we need to look at the contract, but I, I agree with Commissioner Cupid. I think that we can go back and look at the, the contract and decide. But to start discussing in here removing a, a, a contractor when you got a $13 million item on paying class and you questioning $52,000, I'd rather not deal with that unless we have a legal review. And just, we get the message, we can restrict it. I think that's something that the class and pay committee can look at, the compensation committee, and let us deal with it then.
Commissioner Otte?
I want to make something clear here. This $13 million has nothing to do with Archer. It has, it is reserve funds that were left in the budget if the board decided to move forward paying class. It has nothing to do with Archer, and to imply that it does is misleading. And number two, this, not everyone on this board agrees that there are not issues with Archer. And this board has discussed it at agenda meetings, which are public meetings, this is a public meeting, and if the board members have issues with some people that have done service for the county, the citizens deserve the right to know. We don't need to be keeping it a secret. And we just talked about transparency, and there is nothing wrong. If, if there's an issue, that's what we're here to talk about. We, we shouldn't just be trying to say, well, we don't want to talk about it, or we shouldn't put a note. And like I said, this $13 million, this has nothing to do with Archer. Archer happened to do the paying class study, but this $13 million, you know, to try to say that it has something to do with Archer is, is wrong.
So what I, what I'd like to do is propose a way forward then is that if we, if we vote, if we vote for the motion and we vote, if we vote for it, then we modified it as reflected by Commissioner Weatherford to leave it in here, but to try and find some way contractually to delete the Archer connection. If we vote it down, then it stays the same, and then we can come back to you and ask you to take it out of, of the, taking the line item out of the sheet. Is, is that?
That's not clear.
Is that, is that a, but because clearly there's, there's not a consensus on the board here of how to move forward on this issue. We have an item here that we conceivably still talk about in executive session because we're talking about a contract. And changing the nature of our contract, I think, is that a executive session topic or is it an open, open meeting topic?
No, that, that... That would not be appropriate for executives.
All right, okay, so we're going to, the cat's out of the bag, so we're going to have to come to decision here tonight what we want to do about it. Okay, so I'll go down, I'll just poll the board members one more time here, let you all make a comment, and then we'll go ahead and vote on the issue, okay? Commissioner Cupid?
What you just proposed is not clear to me. I don't, I don't understand.
Trying to go back to ground zero where we were before we started the discussion because there seems to be some issues about the specific topic, this line item, and there's pros and cons on both sides. So by leaving it, by going back to the original way it's stated here on the spreadsheet, then it stays intact on here. Then we can have an additional discussion if we want to pull it from the line, from the budget line. It's a two-step process, but we have to deal with the original motion as modified before we can do anything.
What is the original motion as modified?
I'm sorry?
What is the original motion as modified?
We, we just, we call, we, we, we still leave it in there as a, we're going to leave it as a workforce satisfaction study, we'll leave that in there, but we're going to delete the Archer project name from it.
Okay.
That's how it's modified.
Okay.
So if we vote for that, then that's how it'll read on the line item. Still, it's still in there, leaves us enough, enough room to discuss how we're going to do that. If we vote it down, then we're going to go back to the way it was reading right now with no change. So that's, any more, Commissioner Cupid, do you have any comments on that?
Yes, let, let me process that as I understand.
Okay, I'll come back to you. Commissioner Weatherford?
I certainly didn't mean to cause this most controversy, but I did go through every one of these lines before and since yesterday's agenda prep meeting and did discuss this with HR, and the feeling I got, whether appropriate or not, was that they have this particular study on the shelf that that was produced by the Archer Group, that the other amount of money here is to pay the remainder of the contract for what they've already performed, but they didn't seem to have any wherewithal to go forward with them doing this project because they haven't, as some of us stated, been very satisfied with their work so far. So that was the purpose of this, to reallocate it to something that we definitely needed some more money in and not to do the study implementation as listed for the Archer Group, and that was the purpose of my motion.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Burrow?
I think it would be cleaner if we removed the item altogether for now until we can review the contract and see what we can do legally, and then it can always come back as a separate agenda item once the compensation committee decides and brings it back to us for recommendation.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Otte?
May I stand by my original second?
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Cupid?
I support what Commissioner Burrell proposed, to just remove the line item after us to revisit it separately.
And so I just want to make sure I'm right about this. The only way to do that is we have to vote on the motion as amended. We have to, I'm not saying we're going to do that, I'm just saying the only way to get to where, what I'm hearing, is we would have to vote the motion down. That would leave the spreadsheet intact, and then we'd have to discuss a motion to delete that line item from the spreadsheet.
Sir, I believe I can modify my motion to reflect that.
You can do that, all right. That's another way, I'm sorry.
I would like to modify my motion to delete item 22 from item 18 previously on the consent agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
All right, well, I, you have to ask, it was the seconds you have to ask, I mean...
Okay, I'm asking you.
Yeah, I'm fine, just so we're not here till tomorrow.
I'm waiting for the comment. Oh, that was the comment. All right. Any more discussion? I called a question? All right. So we're going to delete that line item from this spreadsheet?
Yes, sir, and we will revisit it at a later time.
Please.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. All right. Sorry. Okay, so now, let me find my, my script here. So now we have to vote on the... All right, tab 11. And Mr... Yes? All right, tab 11, Mr. Wilgus, you have the floor?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Chairman Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Our first item is to approve supplemental agreement number one to the contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., for construction of Cobb Parkway, US 41 and I-285 westbound off-ramp and Spring Road, Circle 75 Parkway, state PI number 0013961, Cobb County Project Number X 2403, CCDOT, contract number 000898. Cobb Parkway, US 41, at I-285 westbound off-ramp and Spring Road, Circle 75 Parkway, is an approved thoroughfare and mobility improvements project in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. Several improvements in the vicinity of SunTrust Park have been identified through the transportation management plan. Each of these improvements is critical to the overall effectiveness of the transportation management plan for SunTrust Park events. Supplemental agreement number one to the contract with CW Matthews is requested for the following. Number one, construction of intersection improvements on Circle 75 Parkway at Herodian Way. Number two, construction of intersection improvements on Cobb Parkway, US 41 at Market Street. Number three, construction of intersection improvements on Windy Ridge Parkway at Heritage Court. Number four, resurfacing, which includes sections of Circle 75 Parkway between Windy Hill Road and Cobb Parkway and sections of Windy Ridge Parkway between Cobb Parkway and Circle 75 Parkway. Number five, installation of permanent barrier fence, permanent barrier fencing, which will be installed along Circle 75 Parkway between Heritage Court and Windy Ridge Parkway. Number six, installation of dynamic message signs, which will provide information for lane assignments along I-285 westbound off-ramp, Cobb Parkway, US 41 and Circle 75 Parkway. Supplemental agreement number one to the contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $3,859,875.59, is requested for inclusion in the contract items associated with the above additional work. We request the Board of Commissioners approve supplemental agreement item number one to the contract with CW Matthews Contracting Company, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $3,859,875.59 for construction of Cobb Parkway, US 41 and I-285 westbound off-ramp and Spring Road, Circle 75 Parkway, state PI number 0013961, Cobb County Project Number X 2403, CCDOT, contract number 000898. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Otte?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make a comment that I, I was the one that asked, this was polled from the last meeting, for some more clarification. I want to thank you, Jim, and for amending the agenda item and including those clarifications on the various different items. I know that I had some questions, so with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
I just have one brief comment, any comment from the commissioners besides me? Just got an email from a gentleman who indicated that the term SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program is an in-house term, but it's not one recognized under the SPOLOST language. Is that correct?
It involves, it involves a whole transportation improvement plan as part of the program, as part of the SPOLOST. Yes, sir.
Okay, so the Transportation Improvement Program is a recognized term under the SPOLOST legislation?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, the Transportation Improvement Plan, when the SPOLOST booklet is created, DOT staff comes up with a Transportation Improvement Plan that identifies various projects that they believe need to be done around the county. When you look at this agenda item in the, the background information, they're just basically saying that it's an approved SPOLOST project, and it's in this Transportation Improvement Plan. Then when you look at the accounting, the, where the money's coming from, that's really where you get to the issues that the email that we got addresses. So the actual accounting of the money is done appropriately. What I think that staff is trying to do is just kind of say that, you know, hey, this isn't something that just popped up, it was part of the overall plan.
If they had just said Transportation Improvement Plan, it would have, it would have been sufficient. Okay. Any other comments? Called a vote? Vote passes five to nothing.
Okay, thank you, sir. Item number two is approve, project number X 2221 to the 2016 county, countywide unit price contract with Chatfield Contracting, Contracting, Inc., for drainage system improvements on Lower Roswell Road, CCDOT, contract number 001121. Drainage system improvements is an approved component in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvements Program. We, we request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X 2221 to the 2016 countywide unit price contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $18,200. unit price contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $18,219.50 for drainage system improvements on Lower Roswell Road, CCDOT, contract number 001121, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Otte?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call to question? Passes five to nothing.
Item three, sir, is to approve project number X 2222 to the 2016 county-wide unit price contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., for drainage system improvements on River Mill Circle, CCDOT, contract number 001122. Drainage system improvements is an approved component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number X 2222 to the 2016 county-wide unit price contract with Chatfield Contracting, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $6,362.50 for drainage system improvements on River Mill Circle, CCDOT, contract number 001122, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Mr. Otte?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call to question? It passes five to nothing.
Item number four is to approve a consultant services agreement with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners for engineering design of McCullen Parkway at Ben King Road, project number X 2309, CCDOT, contract number 000968. McCullen Parkway at Ben King Road is an approved intersection improvements project in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the City of Kennesaw. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners in an amount not to exceed $462,940 for engineering design of McCullen Parkway at Ben King Road, project number X 2309, CCDOT, contract number 000968, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Yes. Jim, we had some conversation about this regarding the same email. And it's our original estimate, just for the design, was that the $150,000?
The original, yes, ma'am.
So, now we're asking for $462,940?
Yes, ma'am.
So, can you kinda go into detail on how we do that, or explain that it was, it's over the estimated cost?
The preliminary estimate for all of these projects in engineering and everything was put together now, almost three years ago. In our kickoff meeting, in our subsequent meetings with the City of Kennesaw, this is a very, very complicated intersection, and it's really gonna take some more engineering to do, to create this. If you're familiar with it, it's almost a five-leg intersection, it's very confusing in the field. And after consultation with our partner, Kennesaw, we feel like this is a good fee.
Okay. I just wanted the detailed explanation, and actually, I am familiar with the intersection, and it is near McCullen Parkway. So I know, you know, that it's necessary, but I just wanted to have you explain how, why, or how we got over the estimated amount, and I just wanna make sure that this is just for the design.
This is just for the design, yes, ma'am.
And it is a joint project
It is.
... with the City of Kennesaw.
It is.
Okay. With that, I make a motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call to question? And it passes five to zero.
Thank you, sir. Item number five is to approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Willie O'Road over Willie O'Creek, project number X 2122. Willie O'Road over Willie O'Creek is an approved bridge replacement project in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. This is a joint project with the City of Roswell. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of Willie O'Road over Willie O'Creek, project number X 2122, and authorize negotiation for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, Gresham Smith &amp; Partners, utilizing selection process one competitive negotiations.
Commissioner Otte?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jim, I just wanna confirm that although this says "bridge replacement," it is going to complete the sidewalk project, correct?
Yes, sir.
Because we're gonna have a sidewalk
Yes, on the bridge, yes.
Right. Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Call to question? Passes five to zero.
Item number six is to approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of New Macklin Road, project number X 2608. New Macklin Road is an approved roadway safety and operational improvements project in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of New Macklin Road, project number X 2608, and authorize negotiations for final scope and services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, Southeastern Engineering, Inc., utilizing selection process one competitive negotiations.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Mr. Wilgus, I know we've had some discussion with respect to this project, and considered it in light of the school pedestrian program that we talked about, and making some different enhancements around school areas. I don't know if that needs to be considered as part of this process, but I'm curious to know how that is eventually integrated in the engineering design.
It should be on this one, this is probably the first one where we can use those new things we're looking at.
Okay, that's what I would encourage, just to ensure that that's incorporated. So with that, I'll make a motion to, excuse me, a motion to approve in light of considering the school pedestrian improvements along with this project.
Second.
Any discussion? Call to question? Passes five to zero.
Item seven is to approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of I-20 eastbound ramps at Riverside Parkway, project number X 2409. I-20 eastbound ramps at Riverside Parkway is an approved thoroughfare and mobility improvements project in the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve the recommended ranking of the three most qualified firms for engineering design of I-20 eastbound ramps at Riverside Parkway, project number X 2409, and authorize negotiations for final scope of services and fees, beginning with the top-ranked firm, Low Engineers LLC, utilizing selection process one competitive negotiations.
Commissioner Cupid?
Second.
Any discussion? Call to question? Passes five to zero.
Thank you. Item number eight is to approve agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for development of Cobb County Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Plan Update Phase One, project number X 2514. Planning studies is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signals, and planning component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. The department is in receipt of an agreement from the Georgia Department of Transportation to assist with funding for development of Cobb County Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Plan Update Phase One. Under the terms of the agreement, the state will fund eligible planning services, service cost up to a maximum of $320,000. The county will be responsible for funding 100% of any cost exceeding the state's maximum. Based on the bids received, the county's cost is estimated to be $110,528. We request the Board of Commissioners approve an agreement with the Georgia Department of Transportation for development of Cobb County Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Plan Update Phase One, project number X 2514, and authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Call to question? And call to motion? Motion to approve, here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call to question? Passes five to zero.
Item number nine is to approve a consultant service agreement with Parsons Brinkerhoff, Inc., Doing Businesses, WSP/Parsons Brinkerhoff, for development of Cobb, for Cobb County Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Plan Update Phase One, project number X 2514, CCDOT, contract number 001116. Planning studies is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signals, and planning component of the 2016 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve a consultant services agreement with Parsons Brinkerhoff, Inc., Doing Businesses, WSP/Parsons Brinkerhoff, in an amount not to exceed $430,528 for development of Cobb County Bicycle and Pedestrian Improvement Plan Update Phase One, project number X 2514, CCDOT, contract number 001116, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Jim, there's been some concern by some of the citizens here in the county about the price associated with some of these trails, and I think you're sensitive to that, I just wanna bring that to your attention that
Yes, sir.
I'll be very, very careful, that I realize that some of the topography that we're going through on some of these trails requires a little bit of extra work and hence funding. But just want you to know that the people out there watching these amounts for these bicycle trails and these pathways.
Absolutely, and this, this program is mainly on roads, so these should be much cheaper improvements, as well as this has a lot to do with our ADA compliance update.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the consultant agreement with Parsons Brinkerhoff. Any questions? Call to question? Passes five to nothing.
Thank you, sir. Our final item is to approve project number E 5030-TO number one to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners, Inc., for planning services to develop a greenways and trails master plan, CCDOT, contract number 000985. Planning studies is an approved project in the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the 2011 SPOLOST Transportation Improvement Program. We request the Board of Commissioners approve project number E 5030-TO number O one to the 2016 Master Task Order Contract with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $272,494 for planning services to develop a greenways and trails master plan, CCDOT, contract number 000985, authorize the corresponding budget transaction, and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Okay, and the only question I have there, Jim, is that some, some of the citizens might ask how a greenways and trails master plan would fit under the traffic management, traffic signal timing, and planning component of the SPOLOST program.
All of our planning studies are wrapped up under that, under that one category, that's how it's listed in the SPOLOST.
Okay.
And planning studies is an individual line item.
Just wanted to get out, get you on record as to how we're doing that. Okay, in that case, I make a motion to approve the contract with Gresham Smith &amp; Partners?
Second.
Any, any discussion? Call to question? The motion passes five to nothing.
Thank you, sir.
Right now, we're gonna make a small change. Like, we're gonna go to tab 15, and to discuss the authorization for retirement benefits for state court judges. I'd like to have our, our honors fresh and alert for their cases tomorrow morning, I'm sorry we kept you up so late, but...
Thank you. Thank you. No, we're glad to be here. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager. Thank you for the opportunity to present this item to you all. This agenda item authorizes a plan amendment to the state court judge's retirement to mirror the benefits provided to superior court judges through Appendix A. The appendix provides accounting benefit on the portion of salary not covered by the state retirement benefit plan. State court judges do not receive this benefit, and thus do not receive a retirement on their full salary. Our request is that the board authorizes plan amendment to retirements commencing effective January 1st, 2017, and authorize the corresponding budget transactions.
At this time, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to authorize a, a plan amendment to Cobb's retirement benefits for state court judges for their portion of their salary that exceeds the cap requirements. Any discussion? Call to question? It passes five to nothing.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And now, we'll go back to tab 12.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Over the last several months, Information Services has been working with multiple departments to evaluate several business intelligence and dashboarding tools. Dashboards make data readily available to decision-makers and citizens in an interactive, understandable, and visible format. Click was chosen as a preferred tool and is available to purchase from a GSA contract with Carisoft Technology Corporation. Dashboarding analytics tools are eligible capital projects under the 2016 SPOLOST. The estimated cost to implement Click for the county is $499,775. This includes internal and citizen-facing analytics and dashboards. Funding is available in the 2016 SPOLOST Technology Improvements Program Fund. Reoccurring annual costs are estimated to be about $41,375, and will begin in fiscal year 19. Funding for fiscal year 19 will be requested within the normal biannual budget process. And we have a short demo since the citizens will be seeing this also, if you'd like us to do that tonight.
Emphasis on short.
Yeah, we are. I'm gonna show you one dashboard that we created. So, this is one dashboard that we worked with during a prototype to work with a public safety group. If you'll see, this is calls where both fire and police were called to the, to the scene. You see, it had a map. If you expand this out, it shows you pretty much the incidents. We, I'm gonna show you first how you can look and use a search feature, but first, as you see, if we click on just one type of the incident up there, Kimberly, if you can just click on, I think that's falls, my eyes are bad tonight, you'll see that all the data changes interactively. And that would be available with the tool for pretty much any data we connect this to. You can also do a search, if I wanna see just the incidents on Ostel Road, Kimberly could type in Ostel Road, and I'm remiss, this is Kimberly Limley, she's the manager for the Client Services Group in my division. And if you see this, you see it shows you just the incidents that both reported to on Ostel Road, and the color density actually shows you the density of the number of incidents. So you see right away, this tool allows you to see anomalies very quickly. If we point this area here where we see that more calls were received for there than any other location, you'll see that that's a senior facility in the county, which makes sense, but we didn't know that when we first started looking at this data. The other capability this tool has is it's very, very interactive. If I just wanted to look at one certain location around Ostel Road, it allows me to just draw any type of shape I wanna look at, and I see everything within that, that group there. So, and that's just a quick demo of it, it has a lot more capability. I just wanna stress that this will be, initially, we'll be working with the departments to roll out internal dashboards and very quickly getting some out for the public with this, so they can also interact with the data. So, Information Services and the Sports Services Agency recommend that the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of a business intelligence and dashboarding tool in an amount not to exceed $449,775 under the provisions of the U.S. General Services Administrative Contract with Carisoft Technology Corporation, authorize the corresponding budget transactions, and further authorize the chairman to sign the necessary documents.
And I move that the Board of Commissioners authorize the purchase of a business intelligence dashboarding tool in an amount not to exceed $449,775.
Second.
Any questions? Call to motion? Passes five to nothing.
Thanks, sir.
Evening, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. Our first item relates to the new Kennesaw-Aquith Health Facility. That's a 2016 SPOLOST project. This afternoon, in work session, you saw the architect present the schematic design, and our recommendation is the Board of Commissioners approve that schematic design for the new Kennesaw-Aquith Health Facility, a 2016 SPOLOST project to be located on Old Highway 41, Kennesaw.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. Motion to approve is presented and is presented as second.
Second.
Any, any discussion? Call to question? Motion passes five to zero.
Our next item deals with the magistrate court renovation, that's also a 2016 SPOLOST project. This is for the fire protection subcontractor. And proposals were received from two firms when we advertised that, and we recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Simplex Grinnell in the amount of $81,805 for work related to the fire protection system for the magistrate court renovation located at 32 Waddell Street, Marietta, a 2011 SPOLOST and 2016 SPOLOST project. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Approve.
Any discussion? Call to question? Motion passes five to zero.
Next item is also for the magistrate court renovation, a 2016 SPOLOST project. This subcontractor is for the heating and air conditioning. It was duly advertised, and there were three firms that submitted bids, and we recommend the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with QT Contracting, Inc., Doing Business as Powers Heating and Air, in the amount of $223,990 for work related to the heating, ventilating, and air conditioning systems of the magistrate court renovation located at 32 Waddell Street, Marietta, a 2011 and 2016 SPOLOST project. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to zero.
This next item is also for the magistrate court renovation, a 2016 SPOS project. It's for the plumbing subcontractor. It was advertised, and we had two bids. We recommend that the Board of Commissioners approve a contract with Maxera Mechanical in the amount of $142,675 for plumbing systems at the magistrate court located at 32 Waddell Street, Marietta, a 2011 and 2016 SPOS project. Authorize the corresponding budget transactions and further authorize the chairman to execute the necessary documents.
Commissioner Burrow?
Motion to approve.
Any discussion? Call the motion? Call the question, I mean. Passes five to nothing.
Mr. Chairman, our last item is for the North Cobb Senior Center, also a 2016 SPOS project. During the work session this afternoon, the architect showed the schematic drawings of that. And we recommend tonight that the Board of Commissioners approve the schematic design for the addition and renovation at the North Cobb Senior Center located at 3900 South Main Street, Acworth, a 2016 SPOS project.
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you, sir. Motion to approve is presented and is presented as presented.
Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to nothing.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jim. I think that's the last one. Worked that tab right. Okay, now we're going to tab thirteen. And I'd want to adopt a resolution reinstating the compensation committee and approve the reappointments of its members. And I'd like to read. Oh, Tony, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yes, Chairman and Commissioners. In 2012, the Board of Commissioners created a compensation committee following the recommendations of the Citizens Oversight Committee. This committee was in place and ended early 2016. Earlier this year, in the January fourth special call work session, the Board of Commissioners talked about reinstating the committee to continue to review benefit policies and compensation and addressed to bring forward a resolution to reinstate the committee. So therefore, we asked that the board adopt the attached resolution reinstating the compensation committee and approve the reappointments of the committee members from outside. Tim Hurgan, Don Johnson, Sheriff Neil Warren, and further appoint Tom Sharon to serve as the court representative for the committee.
I move to adopt a resolution reinstating the compensation committee and approve the appointments of the board members. Any discussion? Call the question. Passes five to nothing. All right, the next item is my horse to saddle. I've asked for the authorization of creation of a chairman's assistant for special projects. As you know, in 2003, the chairman's assistant became a full-time position as responsibilities have grown significantly in this county of over 740,000 people. For the office of the chairman to continue to operate efficiently and effectively, I believe it's become necessary to increase the staff to assign to this office to handle special appointments as defined in the job description that was provided to all the commissioners and is available for public view. The position will come with a salary of $80,000 excluding fringe benefits. And I'd like this case here, because since I'm putting forth this motion, I'd like to recuse myself from the vote. And I'd like, I wonder if someone else in the commission would be willing to carry the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the item.
And discussion? I call the question? Oops, sorry. Take me off. I'm not an abstain, because I'm recusing myself. And the vote passes four to nothing when the abstination by the chairman. And I'd like to, for a brief moment, bring up, from the dark cavern in the background there, Mr. Michael Murphy. Please come up here and be recognized and let everybody know that there's a name and a face with this position. It's been a long, hard battle. Thank you, welcome aboard. Seven thirty tomorrow. Expect the coffee to be hot. Anyway. Sorry? Yours. His coffee. For those who don't know, Mr. Murphy, he's an entrepreneur, community activist, very involved in this community for a number of years. Been on the Ostel Task Force. But most importantly, he brings a calm, methodical, mature voice to my office. In times when we have some very, very pressing needs going on, the idea of Mr. Murphy is he would be providing assistance to this board on special projects. Like, for instance, after Mr. Hankerson has absolved the responsibilities as a committee, as he can, the board representative or the commission representative to the Braves, Mr. Murphy would assume those responsibilities. He'd be working with the commission, the staff, and other stakeholders in the county on redeveloping and updating the current strategic plan. He'd be working with the legislative assembly downtown, programs like with the commissioners, for instance, the South Cal Development Authority. There are a number of issues here that are important to all the commissioners, and I just felt it's important that he be on board to help us with them, move those forward. Because tonight, I already have a number of tasks that I'll be doing tomorrow that'll keep me in the office. But we still have to maintain the motion of this county and go in forward in a positive direction. And I'm confident Mr. Murphy, with his background and his skills, is that person to do that. So I want to thank you for accepting this enormous responsibility, and I welcome you to working with the board on our future. Thank you, Michael. Okay, and the last item. To recommend the adoption of a resolution, reappointing the county manager, and approval of the county manager's employment agreement. And do we have the resolution? And if that's, if it's okay with the board, would you like me to read it, or would you like the county attorney to read it? I'll go ahead and read if that's okay with everybody. Whereas David Hankerson, hereafter referred as Mr. Hankerson, has served dutifully in the capacity of county manager for Cobb County, Georgia, here and after the county for the past 24 years, from February first, 1993, to the present. And has been employed by Cobb County, Georgia, since September third, 1984. And whereas the county manager position is of critical importance to the county and desirable and effective transition leadership occur, and whereas Mr. Hankerson's current employment agreement expires January 31st, 2017, and whereas the county, Mr. Hankerson, must desire a one-year extension of the county manager's employment agreement to allow for the selection successful of a new county manager, and whereas a transitional and succession development plan process is critical to the selection, training, and assumption of duties by successor county manager to be appointed by the chairman with the concurrence of the Board of Commissioners. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners resolve as follows. That Mr. Hankerson be reappointed upon the chairman's recommendation to continue in the position of county manager for a term of one year until January 31st, 2018. And during the extension term of the county manager's employment agreement, Mr. Hankerson shall prepare a succession plan acceptable to the Board of Commissioners. The plan should be submitted to the chairman and allow for training and assumption of duties of successor county manager to be selected by the chairman to consent of the Board of Commissioners. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution, authorize an extension of the current county manager, Mr. Hankerson, for a period of not more than one year to January 31st, 2018, with the conditions stated within this resolution. Any discussion? Ms. Commissioner Burrow?
I would just like to say thank you for all your service and look forward to working with you for another year and appreciate your expertise and knowledge that you bring to the table and all your mentoring and advice and help that you've given us. Thank you.
And I look forward to making this the best year you've ever had on this board. You're welcome. I call the question? Okay. The motion passes four to one with Mr. Ott in opposition. Commissioner Ott in opposition. Okay, now we're going on to tab fourteen. All right, item fourteen is to authorize an award and approve a contract with the Cobb Community Foundation for the Community Impact Grant Program. And Bill, you have the floor, along with Mayor Tommy Allgood. And Mayor, I'm sorry we kept you so long, but it's always great to have you tonight.
I'm not. I've owned him for many, many years. I'm glad you're still there.
Well, sir, on the screen, we have the award, the 2015 Award for the Cobb Community Impact Grants, as well as, on the next slide, we'll have the 2016 Award. The agenda item that I'm presenting here today is to authorize an award and approve a contract with the Cobb Community Foundation for the Cobb Community Impact Grant Program. And I'm going to turn it over to Mayor Allgood.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for your past two years' support of this impact grant program. It's been very, very effective, and we would ask you to please support this in this coming year, this 2017, as we continue to support the nonprofit community. And at this time, if you have any questions concerning past or present about the Cobb Community Impact Grant, I'd be delighted to address those questions.
So I guess I'll carry this. I make a motion to authorize an award and approve a contract with the Cobb Community Foundation for the Community Impact Grant Program. And the amount of $250,000. And any discussions? Commissioner Ott?
Mr. Chairman, I just, I've stated my concerns the last two years, and I just, I still feel the same way, so I can't support this.
Commissioner Cupid?
Yes, we've had some discussion about this item at length yesterday. And there are a couple of matters that came up. One was, in light of some of the concerns that Commissioner Ott shared, that I also shared with respect to some of the challenges that we've observed with our regular grant program that we have through Cobb Community Collaborative. The response to some of those concerns were addressed in an audit that had a number of recommendations which were not followed up on in its entirety. And there was an expectation that that would be done at the end of last year, but with some changes in administration, that did not occur. I have concern, I had concern then, I had concern my initial year I came in office with respect to that. And it was always a fair, we'll look at the audit, we'll change, we'll make certain changes. And to date, we haven't done it. And this is very difficult because we have a lot of good service providers in our community that provide a good work. But we still have a lot of outstanding challenges that other service providers have had about how they tap into the number of resources that go into our proper community. Instead of us dialing back that program, pulling it and saying, let's make some revisions, we expanded it to address some of the concerns, but they don't address all the concerns in its entirety. And there have been some questions about it, that there are people who are receiving grant funds through both programs, the one that was initially questioned by the audit, and this expanded program. So I have some concerns about that. Secondly, I have a greater concern procedurally, and this was addressed in the county reserve agenda item where we discussed and reflected on the past year's prior proposed budget and made some decisions to honor past decisions of the board, which are reflected in that. And so when we made changes tonight that weren't discussed with the board, it threw me off guard because those changes were not discussed between the original contemplation of that list and today. I have concerns about this agenda item because this was in a list of several items to be considered during their last year's budget, which were not included or considered because of the 6.66 mileage rate and just our lack of flexibility. A lot of decisions were deferred until you coming on board. However, we did make decisions, periodic decisions on some of those items when those items came up to the board, like the state court judge or Rebecca Keaton. But they came and they talked to us individually, even prior to coming on the board. So we knew those were outstanding issues that we can massage and consider prior to us considering it on the agenda. So I thought that we would, similar to those items, have the ability to discuss how we were going to move forward on that list of discretionary items in the budget. So I was very surprised when I got my agenda book and I saw this on there without us never coming together to consider really what was the path forward on this item. And short of that, without there being prior discussion for us to massage this. I'm not saying this is not a bad thing to do, but in a list of a lot of considerations, including things that impact similar populations that would be impacted by this, having library hours where kids can go study after school, having Sunday transit, having other things that impact populations at need. Those things, by putting this on the agenda in this type of fashion, it sends, to me, it sends a signal of prioritization. And if it doesn't send a signal of prioritization, I'm curious to know that after the approval of this item tonight, does that mean that those other items that were not on the budget are at play to be brought up in future agendas? And if so, where are those funds, you know, what makes funds accessible for this year, today? That those other programs, do they have access to those same resources? Or are we just saying this is an exception to be considered tonight?
Commissioner Weatherford?
Thank you. We all went through some long hours looking at the budget last year. And to Commissioner Cupid's point, there were many items that all of us wanted to address. And discussion was, we can each bring those up, or the court judges can bring those up, back to this board at any time for consideration. That's simply what we've done here. If there's anything on that list that any other commissioner wants to bring up, I think it's our right to do so and be taken and looked at for this board, to look at and consider individually. And to me, that's what the purpose of a budget is. We pass a budget, anything that's added to it, either one-time money ongoing, anyone has a right to bring that forward and discuss it and to do that. So I would encourage any commissioner that has other items that would like to be brought forward, do like I did, do like others did, go find a source for that, and then bring it forward for the board to discuss. So that's simply what was done here.
Commissioner Burrow?
And that was my understanding, too, when we passed the continuation budget. The things that were in the budget but not approved because they were increases and had to be sustained. We did say, you know, that they would come back this year, once the new chairman was on board, and be brought forward. And really, not in any specific order, just come back before us and make their requests. We have seen over the past two years the success of the impact grants in this program. They have made presentations every year with the money that has been given to these organizations. And they've shown their contribution and impact to the community, to our youth, to our seniors, whatever the program is. And I do feel it is a very worthwhile program. And it does serve a purpose that we potentially can't do as a county government and don't have the, you know, wherewithal, resources, manpower to do. But when it was first started, it was a pilot program for the first year. And I had asked that after the first year, if we were going to continue it, that it be part of the whole $900,000 at the time budget for all the nonprofits and be incorporated in the budget that way, rather than, even though it's a separate program from the collaborative, I felt it should be part of the budget with all the nonprofits in the amount, you know, determined by this board. So I do. determined by this board. So I do support this for this year, but I would like to see it incorporated in the budget with all the nonprofits moving forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Ott.
I just have a couple of comments based on some of what I've heard. First off, as Commissioner Burrell said, the first year this was supposed to be a pilot program. This is the third year. Can't keep going back to the piggy bank and taking money out of fund balance, just because we like a program. Commissioner Burrell, last year, said she thought it should have been part of the budget. It's not part of the budget. Now, we're going to, we're going to spend money from fund balance. I mean, you know, either we use the budget process, put things in the budget, and follow that process, or, I mean, we just can't keep going into the fund balance. There's reasons why we have that in there. And I agree with Commissioner Cupid, that we had a long list of folks that had needs, requirements, requests, and all that. And I just, I agree with Commissioner Cupid that this, you know, just, it's, popped it set up again for the third year in a row, when it was supposed to be a pilot program two years ago.
Well, I think the cavalry's coming to the rescue here. I think we talked about this tonight, the new budget process. In the system that I'm proposing, there's going to be two times during the year when we'll be addressing these issues. One at the major budget vote at the end of the summer, before we go into October. And then at the mid-year review, as I'm calling it, which would be, I understand, is going to be like in April or May. So I think Commissioner Cupid's got a great point here. The problem with the way it is now is that whoever comes first, all right, if that money's approved, that diminishes the resources available for something else. So there's no fairness to this. We're not all addressing these at one time. We're picking them off as we get an opportunity to put them onto the agenda. The way we're going to, we're going to fix this right up front here, is that we're going to see here shortly with the new appointment, that the county manager, the vice chairman, and I are going to sit down every week and talk about what goes on the agenda. And that way, we're going to be communicating to all the commissioners what's on there. I'll be, I'll be honest with you, I'm still getting the feel for how this agenda is done. It's a learning process for me. And I'm not saying that I was surprised what was on here, because the county manager and I talked a lot about it, but I didn't know all about it. But I get an understanding now why it's important for me to have eyes on for that agenda, for the very reasons that we're talking about here. So there are no surprises, because it goes back to my commitment to the commissioners from day one. There will be no surprises. So I'll take this one on. That one got to the crack. It won't happen next time, because the process is going to make sure that two of us on the board are going to see that agenda before it goes to print. The county manager and I have talked about, we may have to move the, move it back a couple days to make sure that we give the staff time to properly put this together. So there's two parts here. We're going to have a new way of looking at the agenda. And for the budget process, we're not going to be having every month bringing up new budget items here. There's going to be two times during the year when you get to fight for the budget. During the main budget process, which is going to go up until October 1st, and then at the mid-year review, which is going to be sometime in April or May, when we take a look to see if we have increased revenue from the tax digest that allows us to bring programs into the budget that we all get to discuss collectively as a group. And the third thing is that I spoke with Mayor Allgood, as I did with Jerry Barr, about my, my approach to this kind of a program. That if it's, if it's doing things that the county should be doing, but we don't, and they bring a service to the county, I think it fits the description of qualifying for county assets, county money. If it doesn't, then I don't think it qualifies. But I owe them both criteria for what that looks like. And the last thing is, the reason I'm going to support this, is because there are people behind these programs. There are people who have needs in this community behind these programs. And I'm not going to throw them out. I'm not going to throw the baby out with the bathwater. So I've heard two commissioners tonight, three, tell me that there were commitments made in the past about how we're going to address this. You can put this in concrete. We're not going to have this discussion next year at this time. So what I owe Mayor Allgood, and what I owe Jerry Barr, and everybody else who wants to be in this process, what's the criteria of how we're to collectively do this? And I'll be getting input from all the commissioners, as well as the county manager, and the stakeholders about how to do this. Because it's a, evidently, there are, there are concerns about not everyone being able to have access to the resources. And I'm all about fairness and equity. So I think that there's some great points made here tonight, but I just want to make upfront here, that I told Mayor Allgood how I thought about this earlier. But tonight, even if it's only 75% are going to benefit, those 75% are people. And they mean something in my world. So I will, I will support the resolution. Commissioner Cupid.
Chairman, in light of the comments that you made, I would ask that, as the board approves this, that it be conditioned upon review and implementation of the suggestions that were in our county audit of our grant, nonprofit grant programs.
I've actually got it written out right here, but thanks for reminding me. Absolutely. And you know, quite honestly, county manager, Mr. Hankerson, this might be a great first test box for how we start doing the new process. After they've gone through their process of deciding who you're going to do and what you're going to fund, we'll bring you back later in the spring and put you on the, on the test stand, and give you first dibs, perhaps, of how the new process is going to look. And that will help you shape your future and how you make your proposals next year.
That'd be great. Just a, just a reminder to the commissioners, the way our process works, that we'll begin after approval, that we'll have a selection committee, and that selection committee has criteria that is made up from an advisory selection committee that each one of you will have an opportunity to appoint somebody to. But through that process, we, we come up with a selection and recommendation, then we come back to you for final approval. So, so we're going to come back, we'll be back here before the grants are actually announced at our luncheon in May. So you're going to have an opportunity to see us again real soon.
That still isn't going to take you off the test bed, because you have a process, and it gives us a chance to have an extended discussion, and gives you an idea of what we're looking for, and also allows us to test the criteria that we're going to be applying here. So I'm looking for, for something that's, that's rather easy to get our arms around. And I think the way you do it, well, obviously, you know, when you come back, we have the process. But then later on, because you do have an established process, we can, we can measure about how our system process is going to work. And in the end, we'll all benefit from it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further discussion? Then in this case, find the motion here. Oh, I call a question. And the vote passes four to one with Commissioner Ott in opposition. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you coming tonight. Now we're moving on to appointments. Would you like me to read each one of these appointments individually, or collectively, since it's the same board? I move, I move to approve the following appointments of Neil Warren, Sheriff Neil Warren, and Mr. Roger Tudorow to the Board of Trustees for the Cobb County Employment Employees Pension for a three-year term to expire December 31, 2019. Discussion? Call a question? And the motion passes five to zero. And now we have some announcements of board appointments. Commissioner Cupid.
Yes, tonight I'm announcing the reappointment of Winston Wells to the Plumbing Advisory Board.
And I'm very pleased to announce tonight, the appointment of Commissioner Lisa Cupid as the Vice Chairman for the Board of Commissioners for 2017.
Thank you.
And I also am pleased to announce the appointment of Ray Higginbotham to the 1% Special Purpose Local Option Sales Tax Citizens Oversight Committee. And Ray, are you in the audience still? Come on up, Ray. You're a trooper. Hung into the better end. Mr. Higginbotham was here all afternoon, too. So this is one dedicated public servant. Just give us some brief idea of what your background is, I mean, brief.
My name is Ray Higginbotham. I'm retired from the Federal Aviation Administration, formerly the Accounts Payable Certification Officer for FAA. I'm also a former financial auditor specializing in construction for Southern Company, mostly Georgia Power, Alabam Power, Mississippi Power. And I've also audited Houston Lightning Power Company. And my background's primarily been in the construction industry, as a construction job cost accountant and construction auditor.
Terrific. Well, we're glad to have you onboard the committee. Thank you, Ray. Thanks for staying on tonight. And that, comments for the commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry, we have the other portion. Okay, so, because everybody, can everybody see the assignments on the screen? And these also can be seen at home, is that correct? Assignments? So I think rather than just go down here and put you to sleep with my voice, I'd just like to read the screen for a few minutes. I want people to know that for the most part, I retained the membership of the boards, I believe, in consistency. I did make some changes. But I spoke to every one of the commissioners about these appointments before I put them on the screen for tonight. So I'm, I'm welcoming everyone back. My plan now is that every one of these commissioners will now be engaged with these various departments in both making sure that nothing comes to Mr. Hankerson for the agenda insertion without their review, and also as they develop the budgets in their departments. So I'm, I'm trying to work very, very hard to have the commissioners more involved in the functions in our government, which gives them more information about what we're doing, and it makes them more informed. And therefore, when they, when they, when they vote, I think it's going to have, it's going to produce a government that works together clearer, because we all know what, we're all working, as I say, on the same sheet of music. So I look forward to working with every one of these commissioners on these, on these departments and on these committees. And I think we're going to have a great year. Now, we'll finish up tonight with the comments from the commissioners. I'll start tonight with Commissioner Ott.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to do a shout out, a shout out for William Cruz and Brandon Legayse. They are both are equipment operators, three. We spent lots of time together last night on my street, looking at the tree that they were cutting up that kept me from even walking to my house. They would not let me walk up there because it was unsafe, but they did a tremendous job clearing the street and take care of the neighborhood. So I just want to thank them for a good job. Also, in keeping with talking about the great job that our police officers do, a few weeks ago, Precinct Three Morning Watch Officers had to respond to two gunshot wound victims that required immediate medical assistance to ensure their survival. In both cases, advanced medical services would not have been able to safely respond until the police officers ensured the locations were safe. Fortunately, our police officers all are issued tactical first aid kits, which they have been trained to use. And that day, they basically arrived at the scene, but the, both, a couple people in the couple were shot. And the husband, or the male, was losing consciousness, had a life-threatening gunshot wound through his chest, and required immediate care due to the heavy blood loss. The officer quickly assessed his tactical, or accessed, I'm sorry, his tactical first aid kit carried within his body armor, and made use of the seals necessary to stop the breathing, the bleeding. He and the other officer, and it's, the two officers are Officer Shagwell Wegel and Officer Jion. They basically located entry and exit wounds, and quickly applied the seals to stabilize the male. They continued to monitor until EMS got there. And without their decisive actions, the gentleman would not have survived the incident. I got a lot more, but it's late. So I just want to commend both officers for the great job.
Thank you, Mr. Ott.
Why am I voting? Thank you, sir.
No credit.
I know, really. It's late. I'd first like to, again, congratulate Chief Hauser for, on his retirement, and thank him for his 35 years of service. His leadership, dedication, and commitment to the Cobb citizens is a shining example of keeping our community safe. And we thank him for having our backs and keeping, keeping us safe. Due to the redistricting that it went into effect January 1, you may be in a different commission district now. However, if you go to our county GIS or CobbCounty.org, there's a tab, Find My Commissioner, and you can type in your address, and it will tell you which district you reside in now. I wish you would. Also, a big congratulations to the Atlanta Falcons, NFC champions, and now Super Bowl bow. Yay. Also, registration is going on now for our emergency preparedness training called CERT, which stands for Community Emergency Response Team. So you can contact Kimberly Repack, Kimberly repack, R-E-P-A-K, at CobbCounty.org, or call 770-499-4567 if you have any questions. And applications are due by noon this Friday, the 27th. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rutherford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for such a long day. I appreciate it. And thank you, Commissioner Burrell. I didn't know that there was a Find My Commissioner thing on there, because I get lost myself sometimes. And I appreciate you letting me know that. Shannon, did you make a note of that? And I'd like to welcome all of the previous District Three constituents to my district. And you'll find that it's a great district. We appreciate it there. We have plenty of parks and stuff in our district. And I do have one minor concern. We do have a newsletter we put out every week, and we have zoning 101 in that. So if you have questions about zoning, which is one of the more complicated things we do, it would be helpful for that. And I just realized, Commissioner Ott said something about, I have to view an autopsyist being over the medical examiner. And I-
I did not say that you had to view an autopsy. I'm sure Dr. Golic would love to-
I am not going to do that. I, that's where I draw the line, sir. I just want to point that out.
I just said you needed to go with us.
Finally, there is a line.
I just said you needed to go with us to Charlotte to see the facilities there.
I'm watching on TV, and that's all I want to see. So, thank you so much.
Dr. Golic has some tremendous humor.
Got it. Thank you.
Don't, don't set the bar so high. Good evening. I want to share a couple of events going on. Right now, we have a free tax preparation clinic going on at Schaefer Road Church of Christ off of, Schaefer Road is off of Austell Road. And I'd like to encourage you to go to the newsletter to see what Saturdays will be available for that service. Also want to thank the many members of the district that helped to do service on Martin Luther King Day, whether it was cleaning up our right-of-way or different properties. I just want to thank you for all that you're doing to help District Four be what it can be and should be. Also, would like to add that I have been remiss in not sharing. I'll be doing another State of the District address, and that will be next week, Tuesday, at 7:00 PM, I believe, at Pebblebrook High School. And we'll be working feverishly to get some signs up with respect to that. I took some notes during public comment today, because I was moved by a number of comments that were stated, and just want to address some things. One of them was some continued disappointment that advocates for the Parks Bond have had. And I want to admit to them that we know that you're, you're in a difficult position, and that the county's in a difficult position. And that although the $40 million is desired, this board has been committed in honoring the referendum, which was to at least do what we can do today, which is to fund the $24.7 million. And as was seen throughout today's meeting, there are so many competing interests of this county, that I don't think there's anyone on the board here who doesn't want to do what's right in serving all of those needs. But the reality is, is that there are competing needs, of which we are trying to do our best to address. And while it's of no consolation to those who, to those who are advocating for the $40 million for acquisition of parks, I was just wondering, what else are we doing in our park system? And I saw that for both of our SPOLOs programs, 2011 and 2016 SPOLOs, we are putting in for both of those programs individually over $75 million worth of investment in our parks. Our parks are very important to us, and we want to not just acquire them, we want to make sure that the public can use them, which means a lot of them have to be built out, a lot of them have to be maintained. And please know that we are doing our best under some adverse circumstances, and that we want to continue to honor our commitment to you as well as honor the well-functioning of this county and service to others. There was also another comment made that I wanted to address about board appointees and whether or not they only do what we ask them to do. And certainly, board appointees serve at the pleasure of the commissioners that appoint them or the boards that appoint them. But I'll share, at least for District 4 appointees, as much as I would love for them to all act on my behalf, and this has not always worked for my benefit on the behalf of the planning, behalf of zoning, because there have been times when the planning commissioner and I did not agree. I always say, you need to do in your gut what is right, and if you and I disagree, let you and I discuss that, because I'm appointing them to also reflect upon what they're observing in the district, and for all of us to do what's in the best intention of the county. And that's the perspective that I have. Nobody's giving a script of what they need to support, and it's my prayer that anyone that serves on behalf of the district, or at least of District 4, that they are doing it, taking into full account of what the concerns are in the public. Those are my comments for tonight. And I want to thank you, Chairman, for the opportunity to serve as vice chair. I won't take it lightly, and I've shared this before. I've been very appreciative of your approach since you've been on board, and hope that I will not be a disappointment to you, but please know that I am very eager and happy to serve under your leadership. Thank you.
Delighted to have you. I'm going to keep this very short. This is what open and transparent government looks like. The hardcore people stay around till 10:30. It's very easy to talk about open and transparent government, and I know most of you are going to be watching these comments tomorrow sometime instead of tonight, but the reality is, this is hard work. Because when you say that, that means you have to live up to your word. And sometimes, it's not hard to live up to that, it's that decisions that you have to make, or you have to tell these commissioners, even though you like them, you have to tell them that you're not going to agree with them. That's hard, because I like them. I like every one of these commissioners on this board. These are hard-working people. My shout-out tonight are these four commissioners and the county manager. I have had an opportunity, now that I've been on the inside for three weeks, to see what it goes into representative government that responds to the will of the people. This is what I spent 30 years defending, and I'm telling you to right now, that what I've seen in the last three weeks, they're living up to what I fought for. So the comments tonight, I've written them down. There's some here that are right on the mark. I'm going to be going back to either the commissioners or the staff, asking them why we haven't done something. I'm sure there's a good reason. Primarily, one of them is that there's only 24 hours a day and seven days a week. And I will say this again, if anybody thinks that being a commissioner's a part-time job, they are wrong. These commissioners, all of them, all of them, work more than part-time. It's probably a full-time job for most of them. That's how dedicated they are to everybody. So I cannot tell you how pleased I am where we are. And we are moving forward. There's a lot of issues. I recognize that the former committee chairman, living up to his word not to do anything that might impact my decision-making processes, stopped some things. Well, that dam is now broken, and things are flowing through and have to be done, which is why we've had this all-day meeting. We've been here since 1:30, except for an hour and a half break for dinner, and most of us worked all morning, too. But this is how committed we are to making sure that you all live in the best county in this country. And I know now that we have the right people elected trying to do that for you. So what I'm saying is, is that there's going to be great days ahead of us. I think we're all doing the right things, and I'm working very hard every day to make sure that I keep and earn their trust. So with that, we're in adjournment.